There was Vicki.
She's there. I see her.
I'm here.
Hi there, welcome. I think we are just trying to get Mrs. Fisher logged in then. She is here at the, our meeting location. Alright, so just a few moments here.
Is Erin up in the boardroom?
I'm guessing Erin is trying to help Mrs. Fisher get logged in.
She is.
There we go, I see the name pop up. There was Erin.
Erin, when you get a chance, stop by and see me.
Erin and Kim, we can see you.
Alright, can you, can you hear us now?
Yep, we sure can.
Okay, we joined like through the link on the, so alright, so we might be okay now. Alright.
Awesome, thank you.
There we go.
Okay.
Alright.
The roll call.
Do I turn the volume up? I can't, once I'm on.
Sorry, I quickly muted Al there while they were working on that. Okay, are we ready to, I think we're ready to roll with the meeting, so President Sartorius asked for a roll call to start, Lori.
Mrs. Allen.
Here.
Mrs. Conquest.
Here.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Karcheski.
Here.
Mr. Skorzynski.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Sartorius.
Here. We do have a forum. Joined for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance of the United States of America. And to the Republic which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye.
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 Motion carried. Alright. District announcements.
District announcements, clearly the, the, the big things we're going to talk about are, are continued planning for, for returning to school for, for second quarter, so we do have that as an agenda item later in, in this meeting. The, the, one of the big things that we want to make sure we remind people of is the availability of, of our free lunches for all of the, the students in the community. I think, I, I think Mrs. Robinson told me, at one point, they had about sixteen hundred families either signed up or that actually came to, to pick up lunches. Or sixteen hundred lunches were, were reserved or whatever, so we want to make sure our community knows that the, the federal government extended the waiver to allow all students, you know, to receive free lunches during this, this COVID-19 response, so we have a, our, our schools have lunches available for any child under the age of eighteen, so even if you have a, a family that is split between multiple, like two, two districts between us and, and/or the high school, they, the, the children are still eligible to come and get lunches from us, so you can look on our website for, for more information about how and when you can pick those up. But it's a, it's a wonderful service we're able to offer the community, so we're, we're thrilled to have that as a, as a possibility. So with that, one of the, you know, kind of sad things about the continued pandemic response here and our, our need to limit the number of people that can attend our meetings here is that we, we don't have the same type of student of the month celebrations that we've had in the past, and normally, we have some of our, our, our leadership from Menucha Intermediate School and Menucha Junior High School that come and introduce the students that the staff selected to be students of the month for representing the just outstanding qualities of, of leadership, of scholarship, of, of character, and really impress the staff with their, their, the, the way that they behave and they carry themselves in our school, so we don't want to miss the opportunity to at least celebrate the, the great achievements of some of our students here, so while we don't have them in front of us giving us a speech, talking about, you know, the activities that they enjoy and some of their favorite classes, we want to make sure that we acknowledge the students of the month from Menucha Intermediate School. We have Ms. Sophia Strong, Mr. Ben Clark, and Ms. Isabella Morellos. And then from our junior high school, the students of the month, congratulations to Sam Forte, Isabella Gutierrez, Peyton Devine, and Dominic Carrico. So congratulations to all of those students for standing out to the, the staff and the teachers. We are all very proud of you and on behalf of the board, you know, we, we celebrate your accomplishments and we look forward to being able to reward you in person, hopefully sometime in the future, so congratulations for that. Moving on to two point oh three, public comments, I did get six different public comments submitted that asked to be read aloud at the board meeting, so this may take a few moments, but I'm going to, to begin with this, so the first came from Paola Verrera, and she asked for this to be read, so greetings everyone, we are writing to advocate for a plan that allows special student populations to be able to return to school as soon as possible. Remote learning during a global pandemic is challenging for everyone, but especially for children with special needs like our son Santiago relies on supports and structures to learn. Distance learning is not a natural fit for many students with ADHD like him, who benefit from one-on-one attention, physical, verbal reminders, and proactive educators. As Santi, many students rely on the structure and supportive in-person learning to help them access learning and staying on track with assignments. Distance learning means students need to be able to be independent for their own learning, every family may be trying to help, but many like ours are also trying to juggle work while their kids are learning at home. To better understand why remote learning is not viable for children like Santiago, let me briefly talk about executive functions. Executive functioning refers to the mental processes that allow us to concentrate, plan, organize, complete tasks, and more. Executive dysfunction is ubiquitous in children with ADHD, which helps to explain why so many students with attention deficit are reprimanded for forgotten homework, disorganized projects, running out of time on tests, and more. This most importantly explains why a student like Santiago cannot access education while in remote learning. It is the responsibility of educators to be aware of executive functioning to create environments that support all students. The remote learning environment, for instance, live video classes has unique challenges for students who learn and think differently like Santiago. Students who have difficulty, difficulty with focus and distractibility, trouble managing sensory input, or increased anxiety about being on display. For students with attention and learning challenges, one of the greatest obstacles with online learning is knowing what they are expected to work independently, fourth grade schedule attached. Our child needs frequent check-ins from an adult in the household, and in order to stay on task, I am the only one available during the day, but I have to be working as well and supporting my students. He's really missing having his teacher physically present to notice when he's not sure of the directions or how to get started. Keep in mind that self advocacy is a developmental skill, which is often lagging for individuals with executive functioning challenges. Most assignments are posted with written directions on the digital platform, instructions, schedules, messages, and reminders. Honestly, this creates more confusion for our son, as well as the written directions with multiple Zoom links. Remote learning is not intended for any child, but especially for those with learning challenges like Santiago. Our child needs academic support and a kind of instruction that only in-person learning can provide, that's why we would like to know what the district's plan is to bring our special populations like my son Santiago back to school in order to access an appropriate education as set forth by his IEP and warranted through FAP. So thank you for submitting that. Our second is from Mr. Brent Pomeranning, and I apologize to our community members if I mispronounce names, I, I will do my best. We are residents of Shorewood and have two students in the district, my family specifically moved to be in the Menucha school system years ago, just like many of my neighbors, and have been satisfied with that decision until recently. The Menucha School District has had plenty of time to, to prepare for the appropriate responses and measures to bring our students back to school as safely as possible. We must fully understand as a community that the best place for our students is in the classroom, and there is absolutely no substitute for that. Given the circumstances surrounding COVID-19, we must also understand that this virus is not going away and that a bit of calculated risk is going to have to be taken to get our students' lives back to normal. It is something that we are all going to have to live with for the foreseeable future. In other words, the case count will never go to zero, even with an infinite number of safety precautions or rules in place, or with vaccines that may or may not become available. Case counts have largely stabilized and hospital beds, bed counts are plentiful, the curve has flattened. The COVID-19 virus has been scientifically proven not to affect children between zero and twenty any more or less than the seasonal flu, those without underlying health issues. Although there may be a case in this age group from time to time, it is rarely followed by a hospital stay or a subsequent, subsequent outbreak. We, the community, cannot allow the virus to obstruct our students' return to school any longer, we must shift our efforts to effectively manage through these challenges in the classroom. Solutions, number one, parents must be responsible and not send their six students to school. Number two, parents must self-certify students or temperature screenings before students get on bus or arrive at school. And number three, isolate any cases in a sensible manner, not shutting down entire schools. There are countless school districts surrounding us that are back in school, back in class locally, nationally, and internationally. Children are back to learning and interacting with their teachers, students, staff, and friends, some local examples include Shanahan, Coal City, Lisbon, Yorkville, Reed Custer, and MBK, but not Menucha School District. Our children are at a far greater risk for losing their educational aptitudes while grossly affecting their social well-being and mental health as compared to the COVID-19 risk. The Menucha School District leadership and board have imposed restriction on all students and families based on a remote chance of them contracting COVID-19. These chances are so miniscule, but Menucha School District is managing this as though it is a certainty. It is not healthy for our kids to be at home all day, every day, fall is upon us, and the daylight hours are going away quickly, further reducing the ability for our kids to get out of the house. There, there are many other socioeconomic effects impacting families as well. I still support those who want to keep their students home to do so. Before the school year, the public voted seventy percent of us wanted our students in school and thirty percent did not. One hundred percent of your community would have had their way. In current form, seventy percent of us do not. It is this district's responsibility to honor and resolve this, this will keep the class sizes down under this approach and allow for more spacing in the classrooms. I want to thank the teachers and staff for continuing to do everything they can to instruct under the current constraints imposed upon them, it can't be easy. Let's get back to the classroom, e-learning is not getting it done, electronic-based communication is one of the poorest forms of interaction in today's society. Therefore, it absolutely cannot be an appropriate conduit to teaching. This was meant to be temporary and it is certainly not meeting our student standards and my expectations as a parent. Please work with your constituents, board members, and teachers to get our kids back into the classrooms. Regards, Brent Pomeranny. Next, I have a, a letter submitted by Mr. and Mrs. Kyle and Heather Roberts. Thank you for the opportunity to share our family's thoughts and opinions regarding the current educational structure, we are new to the Shorewood area and our son Carter is currently in the second grade remote learning through Walnut Trails Elementary. We are absolutely loving the community and the staff at Walnut Trails have been beyond accommodating to the best of their abilities. Our son Carter has ADHD and anxiety and has not been able to attend school since February twenty twenty. We know that the teachers and children's safety is of the utmost importance, but our home is not the best place for Carter to learn, he is struggling to listen to the teachers and other staff members when our home is full of distractions. Obviously, we try our absolute best to limit these distractions to the best of our abilities, but sometimes things are out of our control. We also have a two-year-old son who is in constant need of attention and unfortunately, a dog that loves to bark at almost anything that moves. We know that these are our problems, but we also know that we are not the best teachers administrators to Carter to make sure that he is receiving the best education. I am currently pregnant and I know that attempting to give Carter the help he needs with school and in a few months, caring for a newborn will be near impossible. Again, we are fully aware that, that politics and red tape can get in the way of a lot of decisions, but Carter loves learning about history in our country. Then I faith that with a solid education, he could make a great leader one day. We just want to state that if there's any way Carter and other parents who want their children to attend school in person are able to, we want to help support that process, we are open to a split schedule, even if it means only a few days a week, we're okay, we want Carter to be able to experience that in-person education. Thank you for your time and consideration, we appreciate the chance to voice our concerns and opinions for our child during these unprecedented times. So thank you for submitting that and congratulations on the upcoming family expansion. Our next public comment comes from Connie Brushaber, or Brush Haber, apologies again if I mispronounce the name. Dear Menucha two oh one board members, I would like this letter to be read at the next board meeting on September twenty first, my nine, my name is Connie Brush Haber, my daughter Cassie is an eighth grader at MJHS. My other daughter Kaylee graduated from MJHS last year and is now at the high school, our family has lived in Menucha for fifteen years, and, and we have been a part of your school district the entire time over ten years. My husband and I specifically built our home here because of the amazing school districts. Our girls have gone to Jones Elementary, MIS, and Menucha Junior High School. We have always been so blessed with incredible administrators, teachers, and staff, I have written letters in the past committing all of the above. I have been a huge supporter of all of you, this letter is unfortunately not of that nature. I am truly disappointed in the abrupt cancellation of all summer and fall sports. We had told these kids that if they followed the guidelines, they would continue to be able to have a modified season, and where they wouldn't compete against the other teams but would still have a developmental season. And I assure you, cross-country did, Coach Nicely and the other coaches were following all guidelines, I still do not understand why they were canceled. With the IDPH guidelines, the high school still continues to have cross-country in other sports, and they have way more runners than our schools and are actually competing, and there are other districts still providing summer and fall sports. I have a dedicated kid over here wondering why something was taken away, when she was told it wouldn't be as long, it, it wouldn't be as long as she followed the guidelines. I understand that sports and extracurricular activities aren't the most important thing in the world, but for so many, this is their passion and makes them the all-around great students that they are. Sports help our children be better students, work harder, socialize, reduces their stress, increases their confidence, work together as teammates, et cetera. I literally could go on and on about the benefits and why these students need sports and other extracurricular activities. Taking this away from them can have, and does have, extreme negative effects, and then on top of this, the schools have decided to make physical education and the arts even less of a priority by calling it enrichment than not having grades for remote learning. This makes students have no accountability and does not reward or encourage, encourage those students who are making the effort. This, again, devalues even more the importance of them. I have never been a parent to complain, I am always the one sending supportive emails to my children's principals and teachers, but I just had to say something to support my daughter and the other students, I could not just sit back and be quiet. Someone needs to speak for them and what they need. There is honestly no reason that a sport like cross-country can't be done. They were doing it safely and yet it was still taken away. I don't understand why we can't all work together and do what's best for the kids, they deserve it, and thanks so much for your time. Thank you for submitting that, that letter to the board. Next up is a letter from Mr. Joseph M. Hawker Jr. Says, dear board members, I am writing this with the utmost respect for the teachers and staff of District two oh one, as they are working hard to accommodate everyone as best as they can during these difficult times. I do have some suggestions and requests that I hope will be taken into consideration. I have two daughters that attend District two oh one schools, Maddie is my oldest daughter who is in fifth grade, and Avery, who is my younger daughter, is in third grade. I'm addressing the board due to my concern for my youngest daughter Avery. Avery is a very special girl. She is fun, energetic, and always putting a smile on people's faces. She has many medical issues that make it hard for her to keep up with other kids in her grade. She has been placed in special education for reading, writing, and mathematics since first grade. She has been behind and has been trying, trying to play catch-up since then. I understand that there are certain situations that are out of the board's control, such as the pandemic. I also understand that there were no other options at the beginning of the year besides remote learning for all students. I've had a few weeks to assess the e-learning process for both of my children, and I think some change is warranted. My oldest daughter Maddie, general education, can log in and complete her work. I believe the general education teachers are doing a great job during this difficult time. Maddie is easily caught onto technology, Zoom meetings, submitting assignments. Remote learning is sufficient for children that do not have learning difficulties. Avery, on the other hand, has had a difficult time with the whole e-learning process. As a matter of fact, we as her parents feel like she hasn't learned anything new since this all began in March. So far this year, her IEP has been dramatically cut in time. It is very hard for her to get her time with her teacher because there is so much of a learning curve with the technology, not to mention that she is on a Zoom meeting with other kids in her special education class that have a hard time paying attention and causes distractions. Me and my wife have kept a log of what was done and how much time has been allotted towards learning during the Zoom meetings. I can provide the times and paperwork. I'm writing this because I want my kid to have the best education. I know she has limitations and might not, might never get where I want her to be, but I need to look out for her and do what is best for her. My request is to have the special education students return to school and social distance. There is no reason that a class of six special education students cannot socially distance in a classroom. They can all receive the extra special attention that they need to get them to where all of the other students are. I understand that some of the general education parents might be upset that their children can't go to school, but I hope they could realize that I did not choose to have my child have a more difficult time learning than their other kids. Therefore, I am okay with Maddie, who is in general education, to continue with her e-learning until she can return to school safely. I am imploring the, I am imploring the board to look out for Avery and other kids like Avery, who need the extra help and instruction via in-person learning and not e-learning. Thank you for, thank you for your consideration, Joseph M. Hawker Jr. And finally, the last submission for public comment comes from Mrs. Nicole Bitterman, Dr. Mann, and the members of the Board of Education for District two oh one. I am writing you today out of concern for our students in our district. I believe that the board and the superintendent have been negligent in the concern for our children as a whole. Many schools, including the Shanahan District, have successfully put their children back in the classrooms where they ought to be. Menucha has failed to challenge the, the IDPH or Illinois Department of Public Health on their standards and to fight for our children where it matters most, their mental health. Statistics show that three out of ten parents are reporting that their child is experiencing emotional or mental harm because of social distancing and school closures, according to a nationwide Gallup poll in June. That was in June, and we are now almost all the way through September, so imagine how much that number has grown. In addition to this, with the schools being closed, children are missing their opportunities to get the basic mental health help they do receive from our school's social workers and counselors. Schools are the de facto mental health system for many children and adolescents, that was in quote, cited as a study by JAMA Pediatrics. In addition, chronic stress changes the chemical and physical structure of the brain, which in turn impairs cognitive skills like attention, concentration, memory, and creativity. We must implement trauma-informed practices in our schools and realize COVID is much more likely to harm our children mentally than it will physically. The American Association of Pediatrics states this, policymakers and school administrators must also consider the mounting evidence regarding COVID-19 in children and adolescents, including the, the role they may play in the transmission of the infection. SARS dash COV dash two appears to have, it appears to behave differently in children and adolescents than other common respiratory viruses, such as influenza, on which much of the current guidance regarding school closures is based. Although children and adolescents play a major role in amplifying influenza outbreaks to date, this does not appear to be the case with SARS dash COV dash two. If you are unfamiliar with the American Association of Pediatrics recommendations, you may read them here, and then she provides the website to the board. I challenge Menucha District to stand up to the state of Illinois and the Illinois Department of Public Health on the guidelines, our numbers are dropping. I have friends in districts all over Illinois and their kids have been in school since the beginning with no cases of COVID. Marion Catholic has single file lines in the hallway, masks at all times while in the building. The students disinfect their desks after each class and wash hands and sanitize. These are easy things to implement. Naperville has students back in school at private academies and no positive cases thus far. Shanahan had one case and it was the first week of school and just that family had to quarantine. We offer people a choice, if they are uncomfortable, then by all means stay home. Open the school for the approximate seventy percent of the students who would like to return. Let's decide the whole child physically and mentally as a priority and do whatever we can to get them back to school. Thank you for your time, Nicole Bitterman. Thank you, Mrs. Bitterman, for submitting that. And with that, Mr. Sartorius, that is the end of public comment. Would you like me to move with consent agenda? There you go.
Okay, I move on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I had motioned by Mrs. Conquest and I heard Mr. Karcheski is the second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Conquest.
Aye.
Mr. Karcheski.
Aye.
Mrs. Allen.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Skorzynski.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius.
Aye. Moving on to action items.
So we're, we're in a slight weird conundrum here, where when we scheduled our public hearing, we were envisioning starting the regular meeting at seven o'clock, so we have a public hearing on the budget scheduled for six forty-five. So if we could bypass this action item, at least until after we get a chance to hold that public hearing, that way we don't violate any statutory requirements with, with the budget.
Okay, how about the student handbook?
So Dr. Rowland, can you walk the board through the revisions to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one parent and student handbook?
Sure. What I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the timeline as to why we're approving it in September. Normally, the handbook, we go through revisions in the spring, and usually it's presented in early summer for implementation for the following school year. In this case, with the pandemic, not only did we have difficulty, obviously, getting a group together and was recommended not to get a group together, but the service that we utilize for the handbook is a service through the Illinois Principals Association that follows the press recommendation changes in school code and how they are implemented into the handbook. They delayed their releases of their, their recommendations and revisions until July. So after July, making these adjustments, it was sent to the education committee as we normally would do, but without having a group of stakeholders, the only changes that are reflected in this are the reflect, are the changes required of school code and the recommendations from the IPA press. The two that I, I would like to call your attention to is there is a change that we've added information about pandemic preparedness and management recovery. So we've added that into the handbook, and the other piece that goes along with that is the disciplined student behavior, that there is a error that student behavior that is, all expectations of student behavior are in, are expected not only in person but also during remote learning. And some of the other changes that are there are additions and revisions that add the environment of remote learning to the setting and the environment, and then the additional changes are updated with reflections of school code changes and revised to, to meet the school code. So if you have any questions, I'd certainly attempt to answer those. So if you have any questions, I'd certainly attempt to answer those at this time.
Any questions for Dr. Rowland?
I would, I would like to state that if there are no questions, that we will, if we are able to. Get our stakeholder group back together this year. To then make additional changes that are reflective of our stakeholder group. That would be above and beyond what press recommends. So I would be looking forward to doing that hopefully in this winter and going into the spring for the next school year.
With no other questions, we would look for your approval of these changes.
It's requiring a motion?
It does require a motion, yes.
I'll make a motion to. How, how would we make that motion? Just to include the changes recommended?
A motion to approve the revisions to the 2020, 21 Parent and Student Handbook.
So moved.
I will second that motion.
Ms. Lori, can you give us roll call, please?
Mrs. Thompson?
Hi.
Mr. Skorzynski?
Hi.
Mrs. Allen?
Hi.
Mrs. Conquest?
Hi.
Mrs. Fisher?
Hi.
Mr. Karcheski?
Hi.
Mr. Satorius?
Hi.
So Dr. Rowland, if we can stay in your realm, and if you could discuss the discussion and information item 5.01, the 2020, 20. Sorry, 2020, 2021 District Assessment Calendar, please.
Sure. Yearly, I present to the board our calendar or our schedule of assessments for the school year. That includes local assessments and also the state assessments. I do want to take a moment to explain a few things on here. So our local assessments, which are the NWA map assessments and the Ames Web Assessment. Are subject to change based on our student. Our student environment. So in remote, we opted to not assess students utilizing NWA map. And then again, pending return to the school building, we would adapt. To assess students and also at that time determine whether or not assessments are needed. So I would like to let you know that both the NWA map. Assessment and the Ames Web Assessment are, are subject to change based on the needs of our students and the needs of our teachers. So at that point, I would say that they're tentative. Now, what is not tentative are the state assessments. And that is in October, we have the kids' recording. Assessment for kindergarten, which again is for kindergarten students. It is an observational assessment. We are required to do that. The state of Illinois has been informed by the Federal Department of Education. That all states are required to continue with their. Required accountability assessments and kids as being, kids is one of those for Illinois. So we are required to continue that regardless of whether we are in person or in person or in a hybrid format. So in October, our kindergarten teachers are going to attempt to complete the kids' assessment through observational, through the remote format. In January, we would begin our access testing that are for emerging bilinguals. Who are receiving services or not receiving services, but have been identified as an emerging bilingual. We would be utilizing the access testing starting in January. And in March, we would start the Illinois. Illinois Science Assessment. Which could be in March and/or April. And in addition to that would be the Illinois Assessment of Readiness for grades three through eight. And also the DLM for grades three through eight. Those are all assessments that are required for Illinois for accountability. They are reported out on the district report card. And the state uses those assessments not only to report out on how districts do, but then the state itself uses that data. To inform how the state of Illinois is performing with education. And again, some of those timelines are the window. We would identify specific smaller windows when we have a reentry plan for students. And also if we're still in a remote or hybrid, adjusting how we would handle that given the circumstances of our students. And again, in May, we would have the NWA map and kindergarten Ames Web Assessment. Which again are tentative depending on our needs, also the environment in which our students are. So at this point, other than knowing that we must. Conduct the state assessments, we are placing the local assessments on as tentative. To be determined at a later time when we know the environment in which our students are going to be in. To participate in those assessments. And at that, oh, there is one other change that I did not mention, the October, the PSAT for eighth grade, which is a high school assessment. The high school invites our eighth grade students to take the PSAT, which the high school uses for data purposes. And also, I believe for placement for classes for freshman year. I believe, and I'll get confirmation on this, that that assessment has been canceled for this year. Again, based on the environment which our students are currently in education and the recommendations by Illinois Department of Public Health. I believe the high school has opted to remove the PSAT option for our eighth grade students for this year. And at that point, I'll, I'll answer any questions if you may have them.
Dr. Rowland, I'm sure that you speak with other constituents of other schools and other people who are in the assessment world. What are you hearing about the gaps that are. Foreseen from our students due to remote learning and, and how do you perceive that as being reported in these next rounds of assessments?
So pretty universally, my, my counterparts in different districts are reporting what we anticipated, which are students that are coming into the fall. With a gap based on what happened in the spring. And again, attempts to minimize that gap and try to narrow that gap through, through instruction. Unfortunately, with the start of the school year, which is across many districts with remote or even the hybrid version. Are posing challenges to that. So I think we're all same boat with trying to do the best that we can, given the environment in which we are in. The assessments can help us determine those, those needs. But again, there needs to be a balance between assessing and then using that time for instruction. So again, that's why it's a tentative plan as far as whether we're going to assess. I had the, on classroom assessments, formative assessment. And that's been a big push is to utilize the formative assessments, a lot of classroom teacher assessments to determine what needs to happen right away with students. A large movement for teachers in classrooms to implement more of the small scale. Immediate feedback type assessments to help determine what to do with instruction. And I think that's been the bigger emphasis is what can we do to instruct students and less about the accountability. I think we all, if I talk to my counterparts, both the assistant supes and also the directors of curriculum. We're all prepared for the state assessment to look very different this year. And I think it'll be one of those that in the history books, we'll put an asterisk by. Simply because we have a disruption to the educational environment of our students. And we are also anticipating that at the time of administering these assessments, that it will continue to have been a disruption. I don't anticipate that we will have all of our students taking that assessment in person. And there are some students that may have to take that in a remote setting. Or we may have the inability to do some of this in the remote setting. So I certainly would say that we open an asterisk by this one and rely a lot on our formative assessments in the classroom to really address what our students are telling us they need. Based on their performance and what our teachers are seeing.
Have you done any research into other interruptions in the learning process? For example, I looked at post Hurricane Katrina, which showed. That there was almost two years of, of two full years to make up a full learning. From what those children have lost during that time of remote education. Any assessment or any look to the future to see if there's any prediction of what we're looking at?
I think, I think it's a valid point. I think looking to the past. Now Hurricane Katrina, again, I've, I've seen some info that you've, you've seen as well on that. Another piece that goes along with that is some of the traumatic experiences that students had during that time as well. But again, I would not, I would not discount the experiences that our students are having currently with this. The difficult, the difficult part of this is this is really unprecedented. We've not had a situation where, where it's been widespread in which our students have had to try to learn remote. Our teachers have tried to teach remote, but then at the same time, the social distancing. And the potential quarantining that's had to happen outside of the school. So the combination of that is very challenging to look to the, to the past to see what impact it has. But I believe what we need to do is anticipate that it is going to have that larger scale in. Difference with our students. And until we can, I mean, get our students together, get them in and start to do some more of that assessment. I think we're just going to have to anticipate what that could be. Again, I think your, your example of Katrina, and there's a couple of other instances where it's been county school districts that have had, had anticipated this. I'll even speak to Plainfield with the tornado. Where they had to be outplaced for two years during that time at a different building that was in Joliet. There was, again, there's, there is data there to suggest the same, similar deficits because of the trauma and also. The disruption to the educational environment, moving buildings and being out of school for a number of weeks before. Having a new location. So I think all of those are going to play. I think, honestly, I think one of our benefits is that we have. Many districts in the area that work together to try to help determine some of the impact and also some of the adjustment that we need to make. To our students. So not only is it a local decision of, hey, what are we going to do to help our kids in a classroom? But we're also relying on our counterparts and our peers in the area about what they've been trying and trying to learn from each other. Unfortunately, until we have our students really with us, it's difficult to get a good grasp of where they are because of all the other factors that are going into play. We could talk about the validity of assessment, things like that, but really I think that the point, the meat of your question is. We can anticipate that there's going to be challenges and hoping to get our students. In, into our buildings, into our, in front of our teachers and really getting down to rolling up the sleeves and working with those groups of students. To determine the impact is really what's necessary at this point.
Thanks for that answer, and, and I'll have more questions when it comes to the budget for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Rowland, I have a quick question for you. And you might not know this one, but do they, do they plan to. Have another date for the PSAT? For the eighth graders, or are they just not going to have one? Like, like, what do they plan to do for those eighth graders for the incoming, like, for the high, for the incoming freshmen? Do they, what are they going to do for them?
I don't, I don't know what the, what the plans are. I will reach out and find out from my counterpart at the high school district.
Okay.
It was relatively recently that they, they informed the junior high of this. Whether it was an official decision or it was the beginning of what would have become an official decision. I will reach out and get more details about what that's going to look like. If they're going to reschedule or if they're going to utilize some different assessment results that they may be able to administer in the spring. But I'll reach out and I'll inform the board of the, of the results of what we find out.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rowland, did you state that in October? The mandatory kindergarten assessment has to take place?
Yes, but to clarify, the kindergarten, the kids' assessment is really an observational assessment. So it is not a, it's not a test that the students would sit for. It is an observation that the teachers make on their students in these different areas, the domains that they are looking for. So it's really an observational assessment. But I will say that it is, is going to be challenging for our teachers to get good accurate information because of the. The remote nature of, of our instruction right now. Whereas a in-person, it's a little bit easier because the teachers have more time with those students and are able to do a little bit more work one-on-one. And as of right now, one-to-one is, would, would definitely be remote. And even if we were in person right now with our safety precautions, we would definitely look at making sure that we're keeping our distance. And maintaining those, those social distancing. So even that would be a little bit more challenging as well. But again, I want to clarify that it is an observation that the teachers report on, on individual students that are collected and submitted to the state. And it is not a sit and take a test on a computer type assessment.
I, I would really be concerned because the validity of that is, is, it seems to be awfully low.
Yeah, and that's, that honestly, that's the concern that we have for any type of assessment that we're going to. Need to administer in a remote setting or even in the hybrid version. If they have to take it outside of the, the secure school building or classroom, there's always challenges with that. And it's not anybody attempting to do something mischievous. It's just simply there's a challenge. Without having a proctor in place that's been trained to be able to administer and answer questions or reset. You know, the test system if something were to come up. So there's lots of issues outside of that testing environment. And with the kids' assessment, same thing, observationally, it's challenging to get good data from a teacher's perspective on a student. Through the, the, the computer, through the remote learning, even through Zoom or Google meets. It's still a challenging way, especially when you're looking for various aspects of a student's development. Were there any other questions about the assessment schedule?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rowland. I, I have to revert back to public comments because I. I must have missed an attachment on an email that received, but we did get one other public comment that was submitted. So Mr. Arrola, I apologize. I missed that this was submitted for comment. So let me read this. Good evening. My wife and I have been in education for 16 years as teachers and administration in districts outside of Menucha 201. We value education and deliberately moved to Sherwood for high-quality instruction. We understand the unique circumstances that we are all operating under at this moment, but would like a few questions answered. Number one, have you, Dr. Mann, personally been leading discussions or researching the COVID data to determine the return to learn plan? If so, who have you discussed this with and are there agenda minutes to show this? Number two, what data will you use to determine when students should return to learn? Number three, does District 201 have a systemic plan for returning to in-person instruction? If so, please share your agenda and notes with the school board. Or are most school districts already communicating out at least 25% of the student population attending when we have received nothing? Number four, understanding the importance of mental, emotional, social, and physical wellness is something that should be valued and respected like every other course. Why did District 201 move to a, in quotes, no count grading system for something that is so important during this time? And number five, this question is for Assistant Superintendent Josh Rowland. The hybrid learning model will have to be implemented in the near future. How will teachers understand what the best instructional practices will look like? And do you have plans to ensure professional development ahead of time? Please share these plans with the school board. So again, I apologize. I missed the scan that said that was for public comment, but that is from Mr. Sean Arrola. So thank you for submitting that to the comment. And we are now at 6:43, so I would recommend that the board do what we call adjourn, sign, and die. Which basically means we're going to pause this meeting. And then we would ask you to officially open the public hearing on the budget. And then at the conclusion of that public hearing, we will reopen this meeting to continue on with talking about. The adoption of the budget and the updates on our return to learning plan. So could I ask for a motion to adjourn, sign, and die?
I'll make a motion for a. I die?
Just a second.
I'll second it.
Lori.
Mrs. Fisher?
Hi.
Mr. Karcheski?
Hi.
Mrs. Allen?
Hi.
Mrs. Conquest?
Hi.
Mr. Skorzynski?
Hi.
Mrs. Thompson?
Hi.
Mr. Satorius?
Hi. We'll now go to the special board meeting on budget hearing.
Yeah, we have to wait one more minute before we officially open this one.
Okay.
Oh, 6:35 just hit. There it goes.
And I guess this will not mess with the Zoom streams?
No, it shouldn't. It should be the same stream.
So we should be okay?
We're doing a new screen.
Okay, roll call, called order.
Mrs. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Conquest?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Karcheski?
Here.
Mr. Skorzynski?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Satorius?
Here. Need a motion to approve the agenda? Miss Brennan?
Do we have any questions first?
You're not approving the, this isn't the budget. This is just approving the agenda of the public budget hearing.
I'll make a motion. We approve the budget, the agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Post name, motion carried.
All right, so our public hearing is open. Mrs. Robinson, would you take some time to walk through the budget for the board?
Sure. So what you have here?
Apologies.
What?
I said, and for the public, since this is. I said, and for the public, since this is the public hearing.
Oh, okay. So yes, what you see in front of you is a version of the budget that has changed slightly since the tentative budget was approved. Overall, you can see that our operating budget, which is all of our funds, if you were to take out debt service, our capital projects and life safety. Without those funds, we consider that our operating budget and that we will have a $19,932 operating surplus. When you add back in those three funds, you can see below that there is a slightly larger surplus. The total would be $164,393. A few things I just wanted to point out. I, I kept it in the same format that we've seen before, just highlighting some of the assumptions. Most of those are the same that they were in the tentative budget, but some new things I wanted to talk about. If you look in the revenue section, there is an additional $250,000. That's a, a digital equity grant. When the board had approved the new purchase for the devices for, I believe it was kindergarten, first grade, maybe even second grade, Aaron had mentioned that we had been writing a digital equity grant. And at that time, our allotment was around $182,000. And we just recently found out that that amount has increased and that we will receive those funds. We still have to submit the grant, but we are confident that we'll receive those funds. So I was able to put them into the budget. And there'll be about $240,000 of that grant directly for devices with the remaining grant being for connectivity solutions. And then the other piece of the revenue that has changed slightly since last month, as Dr. Mann mentioned earlier, the federal lunch program that now we are serving free meals for all children 18 years and younger. That will be a federal reimbursement under a different line item, which is called this, actually the summer school lunch program. So I have added additional revenue to that line. And then you'll see in regards to the expenditures, most of those have stayed around the same as they were. Technology, there was the increase for the expenditure, but again, that is being taken care of by the grant, mostly by the grant, I should say. So again, I'm real excited the way that it, it, we ended up here with, with a surplus. That does include a slight contingency. So if there were anything else to come up within the year, we're, we're slightly covered. So I feel really confident in this budget. So I would take any questions at this point.
I have, of course, a couple of questions. Ask the same questions every year, so I'm sure you're probably ready for it. So we adopted a deficit budget to begin with and we dipped into our fund balance as an interim strategy because we recognized that wasn't a sustainable strategy, of course. But all budgets are based on assumptions, so it's important that we continually assess whether or not we're close to reality and budgets should reflect that intended reality, not just wishful thinking, of course. But now we have these grants, some federal responses to COVID, et cetera. How close would we have been had we not been in school and had these grants, et cetera?
How close we had, would we have been to a balanced budget without the grants?
Correct.
So I think we could have been very close because again, like with the, let, let's take the digital equity grant, for example. Because we are receiving that grant, we're going ahead and purchasing the devices. If we wouldn't have received the grant, we could have leased the devices and split that payment over four years. Would have used different strategies if we didn't receive that grant. A grant like the CARES Act with the emergency relief grant. That, a lot of that was used for professional development and software that was specifically for remote learning. So if we would have been back in school, we, again, we wouldn't have received the revenue, but the same thing, we wouldn't have had those added expenditures. So I think the big pieces of our budget and the big pieces of the revenue side is obviously our local taxes and our state funding, and those would have been there either way. And then on the expenditures, our salaries and benefits, which those would be there either way. So I think we would have been able to come really close to a balance, but either way.
Great, great. And which, this is not one of my questions, but, but was brought to me by several people who are under the misconception that because our children are not in school and we don't have our buses, et cetera, going, that we should have this surplus of funds. Do we want to explain to the public why we don't have these surpluses since they feel that they're teaching our children? I think it's probably a good idea to inform our public why there's not this surplus of funds because of our children not being in school.
Sure. Well, I mean, really what it comes down to is the majority of our budget is salary and benefits and those are being paid. I mean, obviously our teachers are working harder than ever and they are, their salaries are still being paid. I did get the question specifically about transportation and as of right now, our bus drivers are receiving their base salary. Again, the transportation budget, the, the largest pieces are salary and then our bus leases, which we still are paying in this budget. So even though we are going to have some savings, which is reflected in this budget, we have savings, we have a small fuel savings, we have the, all the extra trips. You know, some of the extra routes, repairs, you know, things like that. There are, there are transportation savings. But at the same time, we're working off of transportation revenue, which is based, the state revenue is based on last year's expenditures. And we were off a quarter last year, so those revenue or those expenditures last year were slightly lower. And that's what we will be receiving the revenue, our revenue this year based on. So it, it worked out for us this year, be, being, you know, off one quarter each, to, each year to balance that a little bit for us.
So what does that say for next year, since we're off this large amount?
Yeah, we, we actually talked about that at the finance committee. So next year it would get a little tricky because we obviously will have lower expenditures this year and then need to budget for a full year next year. And my thought on that is last year, we landed $300,000 surplus. So if you looked at like a three-year transportation fund, then you would see that, you know, the first year there was a surplus. We're just about even this year and then next year it's possible that we'll run with the deficit.
So if you looked at our current balance sheet over our entire district and we looked at all, if all of our revenue were to dry up and the expenses were to remain the same, really I'm looking at typically how much would we hold in reserves to make sure that, that we had enough? One to two months? Is that kind of where we're looking at?
No, so the, the board has a board policy that actually says that we will be at 25%. So a quarter of our year for fund balance. We are actually closer, we are over 50% at fund balance. So
It's awesome.
Yeah, so we, we will, I mean, our, our revenues will never dry up completely, but even if they did, yes, we are, we are fine for several months.
I promise I won't ask too many more questions. So COVID-19 has changed the teaching and learning landscape, no doubt. So in what ways do, does the proposed budget reflect the district's response beyond that of what we're currently doing in place? So for example, funds are needed to boost the district's preparedness for the future crises in the event a pandemic or other forms of educational interruptions occur. Do, do we have a proposed plan for this in the budget? So for example, you know, for the PPE that we needed now, are we planning for this in the future so that we don't have this, this backup? Then, and then lastly, do we have additional ways to recoup expenses for the remote learning that may help for unwarranted outside expenses from the classroom where we might be needing to help students to catch up, which may be, you know, some additional tutoring or some outside help for our students?
So to answer a few of your questions, in regards to the PPE, I think as of right now, obviously, we were prepared to open, so we are prepared still. And we do have, so we did have some upfront expenses with that. There is additional money in the budget, specifically in the TORT fund, that I would hope would get us through this year. Like I mentioned earlier, there is $200,000 of contingency in the education fund if something else does come up. We don't know yet if we, if there will be additional emergency relief grants, but I wouldn't be surprised if there was. And that is the kind of thing that we could look at when you're talking about, you know, tutoring services or, again, even our contingencies could, could help with that. But I wouldn't be surprised if there was some federal money. We just haven't, we don't know that. The emergency relief grant that we're working with now is actually last year's grant. So it just hasn't been announced if there will be a 2021 emergency relief grant. But yes, I, we would just, I think we just need to adjust as we go. And like we even talked in finance committee, we plan on meeting as early as January to start to talk about next year's budget. And we'll see where we're at at that point and then what we need to put into next year's budget. Because next year's budget does start in July. So if, if there needs to be additional planning and support for the summer, we can, we can build that into next year's budget.
And hearing much of what these parents have echoed, you know, we need to consider if COVID-19 has created additional concerns of long-term effects of outside of the learning of our students' social, emotional development. And are we in need of additional social workers or how does this affect our budget? Is, has the isolation, you know, maybe considered, cause, has this maybe caused damage and how do we prepare for it? Because that stress does cause additional damage to brain chemistry and that impacts how students learn. So I'm just wondering if we need to maybe have some contingency for additional planning for staffing resources. And that's my last one. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll even chime in just a little bit to kind of paraphrase some of Mrs. Robinson's responses. Recall that this budget does include us making the move to go really one-to-one K through eight. Whereas in prior years, last year it was only in grades five through eight. So your question about, you know, does this budget help us prepare for future possible pandemics or future like educational interruptions? And we believe it does because we've now, we're, we've either procured or are waiting on the final delivery of like all of the devices to get ourselves to one-to-one to where in the event that we had to revert to remote learning or, or continue with remote learning or even if, when we get to come back into in-person, if we have to, to switch back for a few weeks due to this or that, we, we think that we've got the tools in place now to, to be able to make that transition smoothly. So, you know, we're, we do believe that we've, we've allotted for that here. And then your, your last point about, you know, are we going to need to beef up social work services or psychologist services or something like that? You, you know, I, I don't think we know yet, but that's why we have contingencies in the budget. I know Mrs. Robinson mentioned the 200,000 in the education fund, but I think there's also 100,000 in operations and maintenance and another 25,000 in transportation. So there's, there's additional funds that are built in so that we might be able to make changes to the, the spending plan throughout the year. But clearly, a budget is really our best guess at a single point in time as to what the, the revenues and expenses for the district, you know, are going to look like based on the programming that the, the community and the board has, has enacted. So if we get a few months in and we start assessing that we, we have a lot more mental health issues that, and mental health support and social, emotional supports that we need to engage in, there are additional monies in the budget or we always have the ability to come back to the board and amend the budget at a later time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Robinson. I always try to hold feet to the fire when it comes to the assumptions and the real dollar values.
Any other board members have questions on the budget?
I don't have a question, but I'm on the finance committee and I just wanted to say that I think you, Mary, you are so thorough and you always have the answers to our questions. Everything you presented was so detailed and I just really appreciate how you lay this out and just how conservative you are with planning for our, our budget.
Thank you.
I, I can say that I did not receive any public comments submitted for the budget hearing. So if, if there are no more questions, we can adjourn the public hearing and then resume the regular meeting.
One last question I have. Giving the economic hardship this year, have we thought about possibly given some retirement incentives to maybe those higher-paid colleagues that are looking to possibly retire soon and, you know, bringing in some first years where we might be able to reduce budget?
Well, both of our association contracts, the collective bargaining agreements with both the, the MEEA, our, our teachers and licensed association and the Menucha Elementary Support Professionals, our, our support staff. There are retirement incentives built into those. We, we have not engaged and they have not approached us about, you know, considering any additional retirement incentives. But both of those contain retirement provisions for staffs that are nearing there.
Thank you.
A motion to go, close this session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post name?
Click back to the regular meeting. And you need a motion to resume the regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to resume the regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post name, motion carried. Okay, where are we at here?
And if I may suggest that we revert back to the first action item, 4.01, the adoption of the 2020, 2021 budget as presented.
Need a motion to approve the 2021 budget.
I would like to make the motion that we adopt the budget for the school year 2021 as presented by Mrs. Robinson. No, I should, yeah, go ahead.
Is it a second?
I'll second it.
Lori.
We'll need a roll call, Mrs. Shanalter, and you are muted. There you go.
Mr. Skorzinski.
Aye.
Mr. Karchewski.
Aye.
Mrs. Allen.
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Satorius.
Carry.
I think we're ready to go to 5.02, an update on our return to instruction plan. And so clearly, when we made the decision to go to full-time remote learning, you know, prior to the start of the school year, we, we made that decision reluctantly, but at the time, it was the best decision presented to us in light of the information from our region and the, the guidelines that we were seeing from some of our, our health partners. Since then, we, we've continued to watch the metrics in our region. As most of the board knows, we are in three counties in, in our district. So we are in primarily Grundy County, but we have a sizable portion of both Will. And then we have the southeast corner of Kendall County as well in our district. So those three counties comprise two different regions from the, the Illinois, the Restore Illinois Plan. So we've had multiple places that we've had to watch and, and monitor the positivity rates and the, the number of new cases. And a week and a half ago, the numbers were, were, were kind of going the, the wrong direction. And I will say the, the Illinois Department of Public Health, about three to four weeks ago, they started publishing what they call school, school-wide or county-wide school metrics. So it's a, it's a specific page that takes a look at the, the specific metrics that they recommend schools monitor in order to decide whether or not to be in full remote learning or if the opportunity presents itself for some type of hybrid model or if the, the metrics are there for full in-person learning for all. I will say that just within the past week, the, the, the metrics in our three counties on that school, the, the, the school page, they, they've, they've gone in the right direction. And whereas there, there was a red flag in a couple, a few weeks back, they are now all moving into the, what they call the moderate region, which would allow for some type of in-person learning to resume rather than have the, the warning signs that stay out. So I can tell you that our, our administration is continuing to work and close to being able to recommend a, a plan to the board that will get kids back into our classrooms. being able to recommend a, a plan to the board that will get kids back into our classrooms at some level. You know, as early as the, the start of second quarter. We announced in the beginning that we were, we would be going forward more, full remote learning for the first quarter of the year. And we continue to do that, as you heard from the public comment tonight and as, as the board has seen many, many emails come through, but no two parents are having the same experience with e-learning. It's a, it is, it's a unique situation that we're all in and based on the situation in your own family and with the, the level of bandwidth that you have or the, the devices that you have, some, some families are having, you know, find success and their, their, their kids are able to still thrive and feel connected. Whereas others, we, we, we get a few emails a day that the kids are just not feeling connected and that, you know, sometimes tears are involved and our heart breaks when we hear that about our, our, our learning plan. So we continue to work and we continue to try to make improvements and monitor the metrics to where we believe that we can get the kids in and not have to worry about the, the level of quarantining that we, we were expecting to see at the, at the beginning of the year. So like, as I was alluding to, we fully expect that we are going to be able to bring a recommendation to the board that, that we can, we can open our buildings up in some capacity for second quarter and possibly even a little sooner for some of our special populations. Right now, our leadership team is really kind of trying to finalize the, the, the skeleton of the plan that we want to then work with our teachers and, and present on a, on a formal level to get their feedback. We, we expect to do that either later this week or at the beginning of next at the very latest, but the goal would be for this week. And we are looking to, to get their feedback on, you know, what level of student returns the, the teaching staff is comfortable with and what that would look like, what the learning would look like in the classroom. We're also going to be sending out an additional survey to our parents. This is not the formal, hey, we'd like you to pick remote or we'd like you to pick return to school. But to inform the, the, the final details of, of our planning, we'd like to get an updated figure on if the parents would still intend on keeping their children in a remote basis or if we're going to see some migration one way or the other as we begin to be able to open up. Again, for the, the parents in the community watching, when we send out that survey or we give you the link to, to, to make that selection on Power School, that's not going to be a firm commit. That's just for us to get an idea of how the numbers might change so that our schools can continue their planning. You know, and then from there, we would work with our teachers to, and, and the MEEA to formally kind of make some revisions to the, the plan and, and what the classrooms would look like. And then we're going to ask the board to hold a, a special board meeting on October 5th, if the members are available to where we can publicly present and, and finalize our plan to the, to the community on how and when we might be returning our students into the classrooms for the start of second quarter, which is October 19th. So that's kind of the status we have now. But we're also working, as I alluded to, you know, and some of the public comments tonight hit on a very, a very sensitive topic and some of our high-needs learners and the learners that, that need really extra supports, whether they're, they're part of the special education population or just some of the students that receive extra support services. We are diligently working on finalizing some plans to possibly even get them in before the end of second quarter. But I'd like to ask Mrs. Tiffany Staub, if she would, you know, share a little bit of the planning underway with both our, our Grundy County Special Education Cooperative as well as our own programs.
Good afternoon, man. We have been working with Grundy County Special Education Cooperative. As many of you guys know, we have some intensive needs programming within our district that the cooperative runs. And those programs we've, we are working and today was actually the first day that we had, that they began bringing students into the district for some intensive needs therapies and some instructional time with staff. Right now, it's short-term, it's a, it's a short time. So it's like 15 to 20 minutes at a time that students are coming in to work with the staff through Grundy County Special Education Cooperative. And then we're also starting to do evaluations for our special education students as well as identifying our special education students for initial evaluations. And Renee, I do think that you hit the nail on the head that there is a, a great need now. And whether that has been caused by the pandemic or perhaps if parents are working with their students more and recognizing some concerns as they're working with their students. We've been hit with a lot more referrals for special education services. So our evaluation teams, our psychologists, our social workers and our speech language pathologists are doing a lot more evaluations. If you remember from the spring, we are carrying those evaluations over that we weren't able to complete in the spring when we were completely shut down, but now those kiddos are coming back in to complete those face-to-face evaluations. So we're happy to be starting that as well. We think that's going to give us better data for our students. Another goal is going to be to start to bring some of the Manuka 201 students in that are in our 201 programming. So if that be for some therapies such as speech, language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, perhaps social work services. And again, we're, we're starting a little bit small right now and seeing how we do with those smaller pockets. And then we're hoping to eventually branch that out into more and more students being able to come in and work within our schools with our staff. As Dr. Mann said, that has a lot to do with how our staff are, are feeling with this as well. So we're working with the staff members and making sure that they're comfortable coming in at this time. But we, we definitely want to see our kiddos in the school. We completely understand, especially for our special needs populations, if that be that they have an IEP, if that be that they have multilingual needs, a 504 plan where they just need more intensive time, one-on-one or small group within our environment. So that's definitely a need that we see.
Can you clarify? I don't know if, Dr. Mann, if you misspoke, maybe you said bringing in the special ed students before the end of second quarter? Did you mean before the start of second quarter?
If I said that, yeah, I, I was, I, I meant to imply before the start of the second quarter.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify for, for parents listening.
That's our community there.
Tiffany, I have a, I have a couple of questions for you. I'm sorry, I meant to get ahold of you before, but my schedule is crazy.
Not a problem.
I have, okay, so you obviously know what, what, what I have, what I'm doing. So I, my, my question is this. Our TAs, are, are our TAs able to work one-on-one with some of these children that are, that have these IEPs? Like I, I don't, I guess my question is, is I know that you can do breakouts. So while a classroom is doing a lesson, there's really no reason that if a student is in there and has an IEP, that they can't do a breakout with the TA and the TA can help that student go over this, whatever special instructions or take their time or break it down to however that student needs that, you know, the special instructions or you know what I mean? Like whatever, however it needs to be broken down for him or her to get the lesson done. Are our TAs doing that?
Like I thought that's So, so we consider them paraprofessionals or our teacher, our teacher aides. So yes, we have aides that are assigned either to teachers or to specific groups of students where they're doing that breakout, if it be during an actual lesson or perhaps it's after a lesson when the students doing, when the students as a whole, the students as a whole are doing independent work. Some of our program assistants or our parapros will be working with the students in small groups or one-to-one. So we do it during lessons, we do it after lessons. We also have some paraprofessionals, they add due to the child's disability. They have organizational skill deficits and they're contacting them about five minutes before saying, hey, are you ready for your Zoom? Let's get on your Zoom. So they're helping them with those actual skills of getting logged on to the Zoom and helping them out in that aspect. So yes, we are most definitely utilizing our paraprofessionals. I don't know how we would be doing any of the remote learning without the use of our paraprofessionals. They have been extremely vital at all of the grade levels, all the way from our primary center through eighth grade.
Okay. And then is it, are we able to say use our parent? I mean, I don't want to say use because it doesn't sound very, you know, professional, but what I mean is, are there times that our paraprofessionals are available for these students? So say if they are, you know, need extra help with a, a certain subject or whatever, like, I don't, I guess it'd be kind of like a little tutor, but that they can meet at a certain time during the, the school hours that they can, like, they can get together. Cause I mean, that has to be some kind of, I mean, there has to be something that we're missing that we can, that, that we can help these IEP students. You know, just a little bit more. You know, like there were just, there, there must be something that we're not connecting. If you, if you understand what I'm trying to say.
Certainly, yeah, I do.
Whether it's relating to something of theirs that we're not catching, we're not keeping them engaged with the computer. But there's, there has to be something that we're not, like I said, like I said, keeping them engaged to, to get this, you know, to get this to work for them, I guess is what I'm.
And I think the, the difficulties, and we heard from some of the parents earlier, earlier, the difficulties are that some of our kiddos just aren't built to sit in front of a screen or sit in a chair for extended periods of time. If you were to come into our schools during a normal school year, a normal year, not a pandemic year, you're going to see kiddos not only in our special education rooms, but in our general education settings as well, where they are, they're, they're not necessarily sitting in a normal desk. There, maybe they have a standing desk where like if you go into professional work settings as well, you're going to start seeing standing desks because it's, it's better for your back. It's more comfortable. It's, it's easier for some people to utilize different features, different flexible seating is what we call it. So yeah, there's definitely some, some students that just are not thriving through this and those are the type of students that we want to focus on bringing back in. We are offering, i- if parents do have concerns about how their child is doing individually, we're asking parents to reach out to the building administrators, reach out to, if the child does already have a 504 or an IEP plan or a specialized plan, MTSS, ELL, to reach out to their case managers, reach out to the people that are already working with those kiddos. But if they don't, we understand that it's not just special education students that are struggling, that there are students across the gamut, even some of our advanced placement kiddos are struggling with this. So we want to make sure that parents know that they can reach out to any of our, any of our administrators and talk about creating some individualized support. And we most definitely can utilize our staff in so many different facets to help with that support. So most certainly, we, we understand that it's difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I, if I could?
I'm even going to say like my, my child, my child's even struggling. So I mean, I, like I say, get, I mean, I want these kids back in school as, as that, I mean, like I want to get them back in. I mean, because it is, it is a struggle. It's, it's hard. I mean, I have, I had things all organized for him and, but it is, it's, it was great and now it's a struggle. So I mean, I, I don't know, I know, I don't want to keep talking, but I saw a thing where a parent put a child on a bike. I don't know if anyone saw that on Facebook. And someone then, they had, they had training wheels and literally put the training wheels in sneakers and put, so the child rides this bike while he's doing his remote learning. Best idea ever. So it would totally help someone with ADHD or like just, you know what I mean? Just keeps him going while he's doing his remote learning. So
Yeah, out of my own children.
Right now that are hearing me babble that will like try it. I mean, I'm going to put training wheels on, on my bike and I'm going to do it. Like, you know what I mean? That might help.
Yeah. Out of my own children, I have one that sometimes throughout the day, he likes to sit on an exercise ball in our house because he can kind of move around and get some wiggles out. I mean, if you ever watch me in a meeting, I'm always wiggling around. I'm not one that sits very well. So I, I completely understand how difficult that is. But again, if parents do have those struggles, we want them to reach out to the school. We can get materials to parents. We do material pickups. If that be that a child needs a pen and paper instead of actually doing it online, we can get that. Even as far as getting fidgets that we would normally give to children in the classroom to keep their fingers busy while we're working. I play with a pen. I've been playing with it the entire night of the board meeting. Or if we have, if we need to give kiddos kickbands to put on their chairs at home so they can, they can be moving their feet up and down when they kick around. That's perfectly fine. Parents can reach out to us and we can help them out with, with whatever they need. We'll get materials to them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, until we can get these kids back in, that we're doing everything that we can for them. Thank you.
Certainly.
Sorry, I talked too much.
Don't worry, not at all.
I, I would like to add just a, a bit if I could onto Mrs. Staub's discussion there, because it was brought up in public comment. So one of the other additional things that we have done to try to increase our effectiveness with this remote, remote learning with students that are having some difficulties is our fine arts teachers have been repurposed. While we have offered some fine arts, a lot of it, and again, the, the concern there was about the ungraded portion of, of some of the fine arts courses. It's because we're, we're utilizing those teachers in, in a different means, one that we believe is more effective for our students in those core classes to have additional teachers in there, just like we had additional teachers assistants and parapros. The more people we can have and shrink the change of what it is to be in that remote learning, we believe that we're, we're trying to be effective with the instruction, but also building those relationships as well. So while it's not ideal for fine arts at all, they are playing a very important role while pushing into those classes. So again, want to be able to bring that up as a, another change of work we can make. Sure why?
Yeah, the audio got weird there for a second.
Yeah. And so the last thing I just want to point to is again, while we're making the best that we can in this situation, I think we all are in agreement. The, the best thing that we can do for our students and for our students from, you know, that have unique needs is, is to get them back with the teachers. I think this goes without saying that this does not replace this remote instruction, this computer, this software does not replace what a caring teacher can do in a classroom. So I think when we are able to safely bring students back in, I absolutely, I think there's no one that doesn't support that. I think that's absolutely the right thing that we're going to attempt to do.
So to really summarize where we're at, we hope within the next few days to have kind of a plan that we can get in front of our teaching staff to, to collect feedback on. In addition, we are going to be sending out another opportunity for our parents to give us an indication if they would be try, interested or plan to send their students back into the buildings, should they be open in the second quarter. And then once we actually publish the plan, we will have a separate date where someone has to make a firm commit one way or the other so that we understand. But I guess I should state very clearly, we still intend, no matter what we do, to have a remote learning option for those families that choose to do it. So that, that will, that's kind of in our plans for all of the school year unless some miracle vaccine, you know, takes the pandemic off our plate, but I don't think any of us are predicting that. So there is that. And then I am hoping that the board would be available to conduct a special meeting on October 5th as, at the latest really, for us to really kind of share with the community what we, what we've been able to collaborate with our teachers and our staff on the, the best plan for us to get kids back in the buildings in the second quarter. And finally, as you, as you heard us say, we are doing what we can to get these systems and get the right procedures ready to where possibly some of our special populations might be able to re-enter for some type of instruction and/or therapies prior to the start of second quarter. And we will communicate that out as things get finalized there. So any other questions for us on that?
Oh, sorry. The only thing I would ask Dr. Mann is that with the going back to school, that we like work on this as soon as possible and that we definitely communicate with our parents a lot faster than what we kind of did in the, in the past. And we just need to kind of keep everybody in the loop of, of what is going on because I know everything's changing and it changes fast. But we just need to definitely keep everybody updated. You know, as, as fast as we can.
So I guess my question is, you really don't have anything to share with us tonight?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
You really don't have anything to share with us tonight as far as what your plan might be?
Well, we're, we're planning on, on having, uh, having a recommendation to get students back in, in the buildings. Uh, what we don't have completely final is working through, uh, what the, the school day would look like, what, uh, what type of, uh, like, live versus remote instruction could look like, uh, in, uh, in, in the, in, in this new environment now. Um, so no, we don't have any firm details, uh, to, to, like, publicly, you know, share at this time. Uh, so we were, we were talking more of like, this is the process on when the, you can expect to have that information.
Would you be able to share a tentative date, or would you not feel comfortable with that?
Oh, sure, yeah, like I, like I said, uh, we're, we're hoping to get, um, a, a plan in front of our teachers, both formally and informally this week. Uh, so hopefully we can have, uh, discussions with them over the next, uh, week and a half, and that's why I said, uh, October 5th, we'd like to um, have, uh, that is the latest date that we, you know, publicly announce, this is our recommendation, and let the board give, uh, feedback or, uh, or, or a blessing there.
I'm sorry, I'm, I think you misunderstood my question, I was looking for parents, do you have a tentative date for parents of when you foresee a return to school, that's what I was looking.
Oh, October 19th, uh, that's the start of second quarter, so yeah. And was always the, uh, continue with remote through the first quarter. Um, so yes, these, these plans are to get students back in our buildings for October 19th. Possibly sooner for special populations.
Thank you, I think that's what everybody was like, really looking forward to hearing.
I apologize there.
Dr. Mon, you know, we had a lot of things in place before we decided to cancel at the beginning of this school year, back in August. So, we're not building everything from scratch.
No.
We have a lot, a lot of items in place right now.
Yeah, if you, if, if, like, I was talking about the metrics earlier, uh, and whereas the metrics have gone in the right direction over the past, you know, two weeks or so, um, or really the last week, really. Um, they're still kind of where they were in August when we made this decision in the first place. Um, so we're still presented with the, the, the quarantining conundrum that we would be faced with uh, in the event that positive cases started popping up in our, in our community. And, um, I know as, as some of the public comments, we, we have neighboring districts that have stayed in session. Uh, but I think you'll also see that they've all, you know, e- each had their own, um, you know, issues pop up. Uh, and so we are, uh, what we're modifying and what, what we want to get in front of our teachers are, uh, some adjustments that would, um, give us more confidence that when we have a positive case, that it's not a whole classroom of kids that we would need to, to be quarantining because of the six-foot requirement uh, and the 15 minutes over the 24-hour, you know, rolling period. So, uh, those are the details that we're, we're building upon, uh, and making adjustments to. Uh, so, you know, we, we could very well be recommending a situation where it's not every kid in the building every day. Uh, that it's, it's some type of lessening of that, uh, so that we can maintain a, a further distance. That comes with its own, uh, you know, unique challenges, because now, um, even the in-person kids are split between some students that would be there and some, some that would be at home during those times. Uh, so we have to work with teachers about how, how, how that would work, you know, what, what, what is a reasonable expectation of what the classroom looks like, uh, to work that through, and those are the details, we're just, we, we, we just have not finished yet.
You know, I, I, I think it's very important that all of our parents understand that the number of children that we have is so much greater than the school districts that have gone back. Those school districts are, are actually very small districts.
Um, yeah, I mean, there, there are, there are larger districts that, that have, uh, you know, come back for some level of, of in-person, but um, uh, that, I think the intent of your statement is true, that, uh, I, I think the majority of the districts that have, you know, started with in-person um, have, have fewer students, uh, or i- in, in the buildings and, and in the spaces. Um, so that, that's definitely, uh, uh, we're not entirely unique in having to deal with that problem, but um, it, it definitely, uh, it, it definitely impacted our decision-making.
Also has a, uh, uh, requirement for space. It just because they're a larger district doesn't mean they don't have space. Our problem is space, we had problems with space before we ever went into this. And now, get enough space even with 30% of our kids not in the building and getting them spread out is still a space problem for us, and those are the logistics that we have to work out, we're working on. I don't think there's any board member, teacher, staff, that isn't ready for our students to be back in class. Uh, I'm, I'm sure I speak for the board when I say we all want them back in the school.
I mean.
Can I question, were you trying to ask a question?
I've been trying for like five minutes, thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so I had a, a couple of questions, I know I emailed you, um, and asked about whether you'd heard back from Grundy County Health Department on, um, some of the northern counties had put out like a return to school guideline where, um, you know, there were more strict, um, guidelines put on to when districts could go back. Um, and you had heard some rumblings that that may be coming from Grundy County Health Department, so I was wondering if you've heard any updates on that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the update is that, um, you know, what, what the Illinois Department of Public Health, you know, has now put out there for schools to make their decision are what all of the counties are, are pointing to. Um, so, uh, yeah, I had communicated with the board, uh, a document from, uh, I think it was Lake County or like, uh, a, a northern Illinois county um, that, you know, put some, some visuals to how they were going to use the metrics. Um, those are the same metrics that all of the counties, uh, are, are talking to their schools about now, so, um, there's no updates to that. It's just applying the Grundy numbers to that, so that's what I was referring to earlier when I talked about the, uh, uh, that there's four metrics that the counties are using, and ours all seem to be in the, either the minimal or the moderate level, but none of them are currently in the substantial.
Okay, and then, um, this was a, a suggestion I've heard, um, from a lot of families that just, you know, with the use of Google Classroom and all of the different communications coming from families, um, or from the schools rather, while we're doing e-learning, that emails get inundated, um, so I would ask again that we utilize our Facebook page when we can. Um, I love that you and the schools have been using the text option as well. I think it alerts families that there is something they need to go look for. Um, I know that, um, you know, as a parent with three kids in the district, I get emails all day long, so, um, I think it's really important to utilize different ways of communicating. Um, and also, just some comments that when we made the big decision to go remote, um, we didn't really then communicate back out to our families at all between then and now. Um, and I think in a time that's really uncertain, it's really important to have as much thorough communication as possible, even when we're working through, um, the logistics of things to, um, let our families know kind of where we're at and what they can expect, um, even when we don't have all the information. Um, so that was, was a comment, and then I had one more, uh, question, maybe for Tiffany. Um, I know that schools have been putting out information on social emotional coping skills and resources for, um, students. Um, I had a family, uh, recommend something that I actually thought was really interesting. Um, if we could do some sort of, um, reach out to parents as, um, kind of like, they called it like a teacher 101, um, tips, where it was just like, if you're encountering this issue, you know, when your student is trying to focus, you know, here's something you could try, that's kind of, um, a blanket idea. And I, I realize that that may be challenging, but I just thought it was an interesting aspect to, um, arm parents with a few tools that they could utilize for their students, um, throughout the school day, um, you know, as, as a problem-solving type resource.
Thank you, um, several of our social workers, well, we created a district-wide social emotional page, um, that our social workers have collaborated on, it has resources, it has the contact information. Um, it also has some like videos and social stories for our families to access. And then there's, um, ways for our families to reach our social workers, if they are, if the child feels that they are in crisis or if the teacher feels it, or I'm sorry, the parent feels that the child is in crisis during the school day, they can get in immediate contact with our social workers. Um, in addition, all of our social workers have been working on creating their own, um, social work page that is within their school, and they've been sharing that out with the, um, school community. So, um, I will add to that, I know, um, I saw some of them, they have the really cute bit emoji pages, and then they also have like links within there where, if you have concerns on this, or if you want an idea for fidgets, if you want an idea for an exercise break or a movement break, you can try that. Um, Grundy County Special Education Cooperative is also offering parent classes, I believe they're bi-weekly, so every other week they have a parent class on social emotional and more focused on behavioral needs that parents may need to support the child behaviorally.
Is there like a, um, easy place that parents can go to find this? I will be perfectly honest, with three kids in my district, I don't remember getting that, maybe it's going to the students email? Um, is there, can you guide us as to where to find that easily?
Yes, um, it is on our website, uh, actually, I believe we put it on several different aspects, so families could find it. But I can also ask the building administrators to share it out again. Um, it is, so it, you can go on our website and find it underneath the, um, the return to learn plan. Um, it's also on each of the individual building websites, and then I believe, um, and Aaron, Aaron was helping.
So, I mean, what the, one of these ways on the, under departments, under special education, there's a social emotional learning page, and that's kind of like where other pages link to, and if you get there, so basically, department, specialized, you'll see social emotional learning. So, one thing we can definitely do to, uh, to address Mrs. Conquest's point though, is we can definitely start kind of blasting that uh, as kind of like news informational, like, tips, because it's there, but you may not, unless you're randomly searching, you don't, maybe click there, but then also kind of maybe hook into kind of like the social media posts of like, hey, social emotional, uh, news tips, what have you, you know, you can go here to find that, and that's something we're definitely leveraging.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I will take ownership that I may have missed it, um, with all the information coming in, so I, I do appreciate that very much.
Can that not be put just on the main page? So it's easy, easier to find?
Yeah, we can, we can definitely add, we can add links all over the place, and, and honestly, that's partially my fault for just not.
I'm already making a note of this, like, I, I'll be emailing parents, uh, about, uh, you know, what we talked about tonight, and with the, uh, the link to, you know, re, re-give us an indication of in-person or remote, uh, and I've already made a note that this is an excellent thing to add to that email.
Thank you very much.
When you're talking about your remote, sorry Emily, do, are you, do you? Um, have you talked about in your initial planning, obviously, there's going to be parents that have multiple children, if we do something where the children are perhaps not going to school every single day, that we're considering keeping the children in a family on the same days?
Even throughout the summer, when we were exploring, uh, the, the, the hybrid, or commonly called like an A-B split, uh, we're trying to, we might not, we're trying to work on the verbiage there, because, uh, currently the junior high school has A and B days, but um, that, it, that was always in our planning, uh, to, to definitely keep families together. Uh, we had discussion on whether we do it by, uh, way, whether it would be through alphabet, uh, or if we go like regional, like geographic, to, to keep neighborhoods, uh, similar or something like that, but, uh, yes, families would definitely be together.
Okay, good.
And I just want to add one more thing to what Vicky's saying, that, I don't know, being, if, just something to think about when you're, when you guys are doing your planning, um, that obviously are more heavily crowded buildings are the five through eight. That, I mean, those might be buildings that we consider maybe doing an A-B schedule, but being that are, um, with our elementaries, I mean, those are students that need more structure, more, I mean, they're, they're elementary, they're, you know, they, that they need more repetitive, so it may, it might be possible that maybe we can see them, like, you, how you guys had had it all worked out and organized, and, and August, where what, they went Monday through Friday, or like, you know, for half day or whatever, we didn't, they didn't have the lunch, they were on the bus, and that's how, you know what I mean, how your August plan was all nice and organized. I mean, that might take some planning away from you guys, um, and the teachers may be, um, pretty okay with that. Um, but then this way, they get their everyday structure of, of learning, and parents have that routine of every day, knowing what's going to be happening too, and they don't have to bounce around with the, the, um, okay, Suzie's got to go to school this day, if she doesn't have school this day, she doesn't, you know what I mean, like, so it's an everyday, uh, thing for them as well, especially with the younger kids. Um, but having the A-B, five through eight, might be something that we should, uh, try to consider. Just a suggestion.
Dr. Mon, I just got a quick question, um, and maybe early, but as far as extracurricular and sporting activities, um, as we saw from a bunch of the emails, some people, kids, it's very important to the kids. Has any thought been given to that with the going back?
Yeah, I, I can't say that I've had discussions in the past week, uh, specifically about that, but I think anytime that we are going to start to, uh, like, open up the schools and bring, bring students back in, uh, it could be reasonable to, you know, allow in-person sessions of, of, of some type of extracurriculars to resume as well. Um, I think we all understand that, um, that, you know, extracurricular activities provide such, uh, a wonderful avenue for students to connect with peers and, and, and develop a connection with the school and the community as well. Um, and so, uh, yes, we, we would certainly have an interest in finding a way to, to get those going safely. Uh, again, once we start getting, uh, students back in the schools. Any other questions for tonight on this one?
My last short comment is, as we're planning, um, you know, the logistics are the final details. Um, I just want to encourage, um, I love the, the second, um, semester option. Um, the further we get into the winter here, we're going to have flu season hitting, and, um, a lot of other illnesses that are kind of coming in really throw a wrench in knowing, um, you know, who needs to be, uh, quarantined or tested, or all these things we have to follow under the health department. So, um, I would really love to see us kind of, uh, hit our groove before that, that time comes. I know some neighboring districts are, um, you know, coming into phase-in plans, and I don't necessarily know where we're at on that, but I just wanted to throw that, um, idea out there.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I, I think, uh, next piece would be getting into administrative reports. Um, so, uh, I've just done a lot of talking right there, um, I will, uh, start with Mr. Rich Searle, I see our Director of Buildings and Grounds. Uh, Mr. Searle, do you have anything you'd like to share with the board tonight?
Uh, thanks, Dr. Mon, just wanted to kind of quickly go over the progress of the Buildings and Grounds Department. Our maintenance department has completed a majority of the emergency lighting at the junior high. Um, we've created a climate control room for the district records, uh, to be stored at our south shed. Uh, we anticipate moving a number of boxes into the room this week. Uh, we began the process of rewiring, relighting the south maintenance shed. Uh, we've repaired an air handler at the junior high and rebuilt it. Uh, contractors have began the replacement of a singled filled compressor at Jones. Uh, we found the source of the moisture leaking into the east wall of the Jones School, uh, we're currently obtaining bids on the repair. Some additional items, uh, we've obtained pricing on the replacement of the non-operating boiler at the junior high, and we found a solution that, uh, is reasonably priced and allow us to replace the balance of the boilers in a planned and budgeted manner over the next five to six years. Um, we have the snowplow bid coming due this Friday. We plan on continuing to finish the inside of the south shed over the next couple of months. Our custodial staff has continued to sanitize our buildings both day and night. We've adapted some of our cleaning procedures and begun to incorporate some more deep cleaning, uh, into our, in conjunction with our sanitizing. And future items, uh, down the road, things such as, uh, finishing of the south shed, uh, life safety and repairs, and a handicap access to our soccer and track field, uh, will be things that'll be coming up, uh, kind of in the next, uh, next meeting. Any questions I can take from anyone?
Sure, I have a question, do we have something that you would be able to submit to us that shows kind of a facility study that plans for big-ticket items, um, that will be incorporated into the new budget, such as like major maintenance, renovation, life safety, things of that nature? I know that things come up to us, you tell us what's coming up in the future verbally, and then we see something that comes up in the budget that we need to make decisions on, and I know, um, some of our, our board members have discussed this amongst ourselves, so, you know, we need to make a decision on it within that board meeting. I'd really like to see what's coming up in the future and things that we know are going to be coming. I, I think I've mentioned the same out of our technology, I'd really like to see what you have for kind of the next several months and where we see those things fitting into it. Would that be something you would be open to providing to us?
Sure, I think kind of what you're referring to is something similar to a five-year facility plan and/or, uh, something maybe even more in-depth per, per month. In my past district, we used to do that in a finance facility committee meeting, so that we would have those prior to the meetings, and we would discuss individual items. I'm not sure, you know, if a substitute can be a single piece of paper with a number on it without explaining things, but, um, you know, we certainly can get that for you.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a number, what I'm looking for is, you know, we have boilers, we have this, we have that, this is what's coming down over the next four months. Um, and this is all included in the budget, so that we don't just have something come up this month, something come up this month. We know the overall general scheme of what's coming down as a schedule, um, and I, I don't want to speak for everybody. And I I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I know that I've spoke to a couple of other people when we've gotten things on the fly and we're like, well, I would have liked to know that this is coming before I made a decision on something that I made a decision on the month before. So I don't know if anybody else on on the board would like to speak to that notion as well.
If I could like, it was probably, it was definitely before Mr. Searle started, but his predecessor had developed like a long range facility, you know, planning tool that he did share with the board at a meeting. I don't think that's been within the past 12 months, so it's probably definitely due for an update. Especially now that Mr. Searle is here and has put his eyes on what he believes the the next direction for some of the facilities to go. So that's that's definitely a very reasonable and appropriate request to get a, you know, multi year facility projection going.
Thank you very much.
And I know that like Mr. Susan Technology, I don't know if he's still on, he seems to have vanished from his his camera there right now. But I know he has presented a two to three year kind of outline. Again, all of that was pre COVID. So, you know, so these are due for updates. There's Mr. Susan in the the Mrs. Fisher Hollywood Square moment right now. But but yeah, both of those get some big, big picture items that, yeah, as we start to plan for next year's budget. Yeah, having a multi year outlook on that is is quite appropriate.
I have a question for Mr. Searle.
Yes, sir.
That leak in the in the wall on this east side of Jones School, does that affect the gymnasium?
It has, and I think it still does. There's a moisture situation that's occurring all along the wall that's about six to eight feet high from the base up. So what's occurring is there's been multiple years of some type of moisture coming through. And it's very, I think it's varying in intensity depending on, you know, the weather that we have. That's also led to freeze thaw issues, and it's made it so the pretty much all the paint is bubbling off on the inside of the gym on the the extent of the entire east wall, probably about six to eight feet tall. You know, that's just the small part that's undermining the integrity of that wall. And we, you know, definitely want to get it repaired.
Is it ruining the floor?
I don't think it's got that far yet. We did do a couple of little tests on it, but certainly is ruining some of the electrical. It's certainly deteriorating some of our fire alarm systems. We're having continual struggles with them because the moisture is reaching the wires and they are impacting, giving us intermittent signals. So we're, you know, wanting to get that executed as soon as possible, hopefully before winter. Not a large dollar amount, so it's nothing to get dramatically, you know, worried about. It's it's a modest amount of money. Basically, tuck pointing is what we think is going to solve the issue. The problem looks like it's only about maybe eight courses from the top down. So it's a very modest amount. Not sure why it's just that area. But I have a feeling, you know, there was probably a roof issue prior to me being here that didn't get resolved. And that probably did the trick for what what's occurring. So I'm thinking we have it pretty well under control.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Searle, is that a fix of a fix? Because if I recall correctly, didn't we just fix something a couple of years ago with with that roof?
I think you're remembering the junior high roof. We had multiple issues with the junior high roof that and Mr. Searle has had to fix the junior high roof since he's been here as well. So
Okay.
But but yeah, the the major roof problem that we had that the board has seen within the past two years was the constant leaks at the junior high. You know, prior to that, it was from the 2015 storm that did a bunch of roof damage that insurance did a lot of fixes for. But go ahead, Mr. Searle, if you were going to respond.
The only thing I was going to add was there is a parapet wall. There's a there's an extended wall that had quite a few leaks when I first got here. And I believe that's probably created most of the issues. I think it had been, you know, it had been going for quite a while. I don't know if it's years or if it's months. Looking at the breaks that I was seeing there, it looks like possibly years. Kind of hard to find and a little bit difficult to to repair, but we've resolved all of that. So now we're kind of dealing with the after effects.
Anything else for Mr. Searle?
Have you had any major projects that you've had you've had to push like that we'll be expecting next year due to, you know, COVID and and being out of the buildings and things like that?
You know, I don't know if they're unaccounted for projects. Obviously, the boiler issue with the junior high has kind of been big on our list and taken up huge amount of time in terms of life safety issues, you know, I'm just trying to get into them right now. I really don't have a complete handle on what's happening. We're in the process of looking at those. I mean, I'm not going to lie to you, it's taken a significant amount of time and energy out of what we normally would have been doing to deal with the preparations and the ability to get the school started during the COVID issue. And it's diverted, you know, a great deal of our resources. We aren't a large department by any means. And we're trying to get back to the things that we should be doing until we can't do them, you know, and we have to divert again. So.
I had a lot of feedback from the board meeting prior the monthly one prior to when we were going to go back about how thorough your presentation was and how much information you gave to families, making them feel comfortable with what you had in place for in person learning. So I just wanted to let you know that the information you provided was very well received, and I really appreciate how thorough you were with that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any other questions I can answer?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Searle.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Robinson, any other updates from the business or finance side?
The only thing I wanted to mention, and you already touched on it, was just lunches. That was obviously a major change since the last board meeting. So just for all families, you pretty much said what I was going to say, though, just it includes any kids under the age of 18. So if you have a toddler or someone in high school, it as of right now, it's all drive through. You don't have to get out of your car. You just pull up and let them know how many lunches you need. And there is not not a sign up form. We did put a form out to start the year just so we could get a ballpark number to get planning. But now we are just working off of the prior day. So Mondays and Wednesdays, 10 to 12 o'clock at each of the schools at all of the four elementary schools, M I S and the junior high.
All right, Mr. Susan.
All right. Well, the start of the year has been a roller coaster for the technology team, as you might imagine. I'm really proud, though, of what the team did to assist, adapt, change, overcome the different challenges everyone's dealing with to put Manuka to one, quite honestly, in the best possible place or position for success. For example, to kind of do a quick employee highlight, our six technicians, Bruce, Sam, David, Tom, Matt, and Andrew. I mean, they're basically charged with maintaining over 4,500 iPads, Chromebooks and staff laptops. And quite honestly, they're doing a phenomenal job keeping things running. And without their constant efforts, I mean, the district would look significantly different. That being said, you know, I wish everything was perfect, but you know, we are fighting some battles. Most notably, we recently have seen like a performance degradation degradation in specifically one of our Chromebook models with Zoom in particular that we are going back and forth with support and things like this. We have an idea that we might have a chance of fixing this. So we're going to kind of roll this out at Walnut Trails fourth grade tomorrow. And basically, the the quick summary is parents are going to drop off their Chromebooks in the afternoon, and then we're going to spin around and reconfigure them and then turn them back for pickup that same day or early the next morning. And hopefully, we hear from Walnut Trails teachers come, you know, Wednesday afternoon that, hey, that was a noticeably better day. If that is the case, then we'll be rolling that out to the other impacted grade levels and our students who have that particular HP Chromebook. So we're hoping, and one of the things that's really been hard for us, quite honestly, is we used to be able to kind of walk into a classroom and go help 30 kids and fix 30 problems and then walk away. And obviously, you can't do that now. So finding solutions, testing them, deploying solutions and verifying that they are good is significantly more difficult, as you can imagine. Besides that, though, so you may ask, well, where is the tech department going? If you can remember to pre COVID, and it feels like 20 years ago now, but prior to that, I was starting to kind of prepare the board for, we really need to go after some of our classroom audio video equipment to upgrade that, like most of them will be projectors in the in the classroom. So now, obviously, we're going to kind of start getting kind of back on that project scene now that there's new models out and new pricing structures and things and develop a plan to make you know, a big dent in some of our lagging projectors that require all lights are off or half lights off. Try to see if we can make a dent on that problem. And finally, the technology team's been brainstorming quite a bit on how do we better serve now in particular, parents? Parents are now kind of, quite honestly, like our new customer, if you will, where pre pandemic, as long as a parent could get into, say, Power School or Teacher E's, whatever, you know, that was pretty much as long as they could get and see their grades. That's all they really cared about from our perspective. But now, obviously, with so many parents helping with remote instruction, we so how can we better serve our parents? And so we've started this on our website. We did this back in spring, but we're going to kind of renew our efforts into it and increasing our like parent and student documentation, help help videos, how to guides on some of our more common applications and even like, quite honestly, device troubleshooting. So it's not a, you know, email us automatically or drive it in. So we are making strides on that. I hope at the next meeting to kind of even demonstrate that is it is currently on our website now, but we hope to be adding some significant significant content to it in the next couple of weeks. With that, I will take any of your questions.
I actually have a question for you because you know what, I've noticed that our students have an issue with this. So I don't know if this might be a doc, something that you might want to document, but they have an issue when they're in Google Classroom and maybe they are zooming that they forget how to go from Zoom to the Google Classroom and then back to Zoom by that, you know, down by the the little bar at the bottom. So like, and sometimes the parents, like I had to walk a parent through that. And he gets all confused and I feel bad for the man. But so I mean, that might be something that might be helpful to the to the parents and might make it easier if they, again, it's, you know, just to remember, okay, Zoom, you have to just click on the video, then, you know, go back to go to the classroom. You know what I mean? Like that might.
I mean, the application switching or whatever you want to call it. No, they're that's a good idea. And thank you for bringing that up because honestly, we've been, we've been kind of brainstorming different things that we see come our way that get reported. But that obviously, we don't hear everything. No, we can definitely add that to kind of like our list. Already wrote that down. So thank you very much for that.
Yes, thank you.
Even if you did like a little vignette or something of it just to show them how to walk through it, I think it'd be awesome.
Yeah, like I, last week, we sent out a video of just like how to check your kids' grades on the Power School app and see their missing assignments. And that I got some positive kind of a word back on that that helped me a difference. So we're hoping, so not only part of part of this project is obviously creating more content, but then we can obviously do a better job kind of advertising it. So, hey, this week or every other week, here's a new piece we've launched, if you will, go check it out if it applies to you. If your child uses IXL or your child uses whatever. I think I think that'll go a long way in really kind of serving our parents more so and and really kind of turning the focus a little bit more to them versus previously doing it, but.
Vicky, why don't you go first?
I want to give Aaron and his team kudos because I've heard many, many good things from teachers and parents. There's been a lot of positive comments on Facebook about how well the technology, even though there's been several glitches, there's been the support there to help. So thank you to all of them.
All right, Mrs. Stott, do you have anything else to add?
I do. So I I believe all of you guys already have seen my board packet, but just some things that I wanted to share and one item that actually was not in there because I got it after I had submitted the board packet. A part of special education, we are required to submit several different codes and and numbers and data to the state for our students and special education services. So when we submit all of that, then about about six months later, we get feedback from the state on how we're doing. So we just got our little report card and we have met all of our criteria. And the one that I'm very proud of and the most proud of is how we have the majority of our students with special education services. And the overwhelming majority are in the general education setting. And this is something in special education that a lot of districts struggle with because they know that children need individualized instruction, and they know that children might need that small group setting. But our staff at all of our buildings have found an amazing way of meeting their needs in the general education setting. Another component that I'm really proud in and I proud of, and I know that Mary actually put it in her report for the budget hearing. We've decreased the number of students that are needing to go out of district for services. So that has decreased that line item in our budget, which is good, but what's even better, and the way that I look at it is even better, is that we're meeting the students' needs in their home environment with their peers that they live around, and we're not needing to put them on a bus for a long duration. And there's some kiddos that are going to need that, and that's something that's going to always be needed for students with the most intensive needs. But I could not be more proud of our building staff that are constantly working to keep those kiddos in their home environment and working to support them in that general education classroom. So that's one thing that I'm really proud of. It wasn't, I didn't get it in the board packet, but I wanted to make sure that you guys all heard that. And some of the other highlights that we didn't that I didn't share yet. So we did talk about our social emotional learning and the webpages and the outreach that some of our social workers have shared. We'll definitely share that out more and make sure that more parents are aware of that. But I also wanted to highlight that our social workers were kind of charged with a difficult feat at the beginning of this year when it came to our social emotional learning curriculum. So currently, we utilize Second Step, which is a great program research space for social emotional learning. And when we began the year, we realized that we're not going to be able to utilize that curriculum the exact same way that we always had because it's paper based materials. It's a book, it's in a binder, and it it's not something that you could just give to each teacher. So our social workers each broke up the grade levels and they took a grade level and they're creating online. They're taking that and putting it all online, all the resources online, embedding videos and activities for the teachers just to be able to grab and utilize. So it makes it easier on our classroom teachers. Definitely not an easy feat for our social workers, but I could not be more proud of the amazing work that they've done. They've made it very friendly, age appropriate for each of the different grade levels, kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. Six, seventh, and eighth grade are already online, so that was a little bit of an easier jump for our teachers and our social workers to utilize. In addition to that, we talked about our evaluations and we're a little bit behind the eight ball coming in there because we had so many from last spring that we needed to push over. And then we have had an increase in referrals from what we get in a typical year. So our our social workers, our psychologists, our speech language pathologists are definitely working very hard. This week, they're starting to bring kiddos in to complete those face to face evaluations. We're very happy with that as well. And we're glad that we're able to see some of those kiddos in person again. As Dr. Man said, and we spoke about earlier, another one of our goals is to start to get more in person therapies and possibly instruction coming in the next few weeks. So we're starting with our Grundy County population, and we're hoping to get a few more populations coming in soon. And another area that we've been very proud of is our digital intervention. So our MTSS teachers reached out to me over the summer and said, we would like to do some digital interventions. Can we research those and focus some of our funding on that this year? So they put several, and I couldn't even tell you how many interventions, digital interventions, online interventions through the wringer. They they put them through a vetting process. They researched them, put them through a vetting process to make sure that they meet our criteria for our local needs. And then they determined, they narrowed it down to a few different interventions that they wanted to utilize, targeting reading, the early reading, later reading, and then our math skills. So we've added those to our our intervention base for this year. And the beautiful thing of that is that we can use them no matter if we're in remote or if the child is in person. So that's something that we're hoping we can continue. And I I believe that they're going pretty well. We've got them. Again, thank you to Aaron and the tech team because they've been pushing all of these interventions out as we've been purchasing them. They've been flipping them around and getting them ready for the teachers and the students to be able to utilize. So they've been working very hard on that. Again, we're working on helping our teachers through progress monitoring and data collection. We've been doing a We've been doing a, a weekly Bitmoji classroom from the student services team that we push out and it has little, um, sometimes they'll have a video that we found that was successful or an article about, um, about progress monitoring or an article about social emotional learning in a, um, in a virtual setting, virtual classroom. And, um, we've been sharing that information out each week with our student services teams. Um, and then this week we are starting monthly Q and A sessions. So the beginning of this Q and A session, um, that's actually going to be at 8:00 AM tomorrow morning will be a, um, focus on kind of the, the legal updates in the special education realm. And also including some updates to what our expectations are for remote learning, um, and in-person learning when you do return to that, um, how the, how it's going to look different than a normal year. And then, um, we'll have that open at the end for questions and answers for our student services teams. Um, so we can make sure that we're continuing to help them. And that's, that's the biggest focus out of the student services office right now is how can we help our staff, help our families and our students? So I, that's all that I have, but if you guys have any questions, I can certainly say more.
Appropriate wait time? All right, Dr. Rula.
So a lot of, uh, my update has been part of the discussion and information items. Um, so really just to give you kind of an overview or I guess a big level, uh, really what we're working on right now out of the, out of the curriculum office is really what does that instruction look like when we get the return to instruction plan? Um, so there's a variety of models, uh, that we're looking at and really working on what was designed originally in the fall and then making adoptions to that based on where we currently are with our, uh, ability to keep, uh, students distant and safe and things like that. So we're really working through the different ways of, of instructing our students, both in the hybrid model and also the fully remote and trying to make sure that we are doing it, um, justice for both of those models. Uh, cause ultimately when we have students returning, we're going to have, uh, still full remote students and also some version of in-person. And so we want to make sure that we are doing, uh, the most effective job that we can. So a lot of what's happening right now in the curriculum office is, is looking at the instructional models. We've been working with our administrative team on scheduling and what that could look like. And again, as Dr. Mon mentioned, we are in the process now moving with our, our teacher groups, uh, to begin looking at what does that look like in the actual real world of a classroom, uh, whether it be remote classroom or whether it be a, uh, in-person classroom. So, uh, quite a bit of work going on with that. Still quite a bit of work left to go, but definitely in a positive, um, positive step. And I think we are all excited to look at the potential of what, what could it look like for a staff or students back, uh, no matter how, how long we get them or for how frequently we have them in our, in our buildings. We're definitely missing that. Uh, I will be honest with you. It's rather, um, interesting for me. Uh, I, at this time, usually in a given year, I've been in classrooms quite a bit. Uh, have met with teachers, uh, with coffee and curriculums. And at this point, um, I walk around buildings and I, I, I see some teachers teaching them to classrooms on remote learning, uh, but it is definitely not the same as I'm sure it is not the same for our students and, and our teachers as well. So looking forward to some, uh, return to normalcy or at least rights, the, the steps in that direction. So. Uh, if there are any questions that I might be able to address, uh, I'd be happy to do so.
Hi, I have a quick question. In your discussions, I know before when we were going to return to, um, in-person, there was some discussion, especially for the elementary teachers, that certain teachers would be assigned to in school and certain teachers would be signed to remote so that they weren't doing both. Is that still kind of the plan going forward or are you looking at other options as well?
Uh, we're trying to look at all the options that we have available. So the original, the original plan that we would have enacted in the fall, had we returned, would have been having at the elementary, a full-time remote instructional teacher. So that's still one of the, one of the things that we've been discussing. The other one that we, we also looked at was the idea of sharing, um, remote, uh, a teacher who would have a, uh, in-person classroom and then also having a handful of students that were remote. Uh, that's still on the table as well to consider as all options have to be, uh, at this point and really need to get some feedback. Uh, twofold. One, uh, when students come back in the building, we want to make sure that we are doing it in a safe manner. So we need to be able to look at that distancing. We need to be able to have, uh, the students i- in a safe environment. We need to have our teachers in a safe environment. So we definitely want to look at, uh, how we're able to instruct both our students in person. What does that look like? And then of course our remote side, how are we giving them effective instruction without reducing the time uh, that they would be receiving instruction in a normal remote setting as well. So that's definitely part of it. The other thing that we have to consider is, uh, the potential that we're going to have to flip between, um, this hybrid, uh, or and also back into a full remote. Um, so I think what we can definitely, um, with a fairly high level of confidence be able to say is at some point throughout the school year, as we have students return, there will be instances in which we may have to revert back to a full remote for a period of time. Again, hopefully we would expect that that period of time to be incredibly short. But again, with the Illinois and our areas, it's very likely that at some point that those numbers may go up in which we have to, especially within our community. Or as we were mentioning before, within our, um, our schools, having to quarantine while, while not necessarily becoming, uh, COVID positive, but coming in contact and having quarantine and not having enough staff or a whole classroom having to quarantine. We know that then there are aspects that may have to go into full remote. So really what we're trying to balance is effectiveness of instruction and also minimizing the amount of disruption for a student with a relationship that they're building with a teacher. So we're trying to balance all of those things. And that's again, why this is some, uh, while we have a, a big picture, uh, frame of this, these are some of those small details that we really have to work out with the teachers. While they seem small, they really could have a big impact on both the student as a, um, you know, a relationship building with teachers and also that disruption that may occur. And of course then the teacher with their teacher workload and also the effectiveness of, of planning for instruction. And we're trying to make sure that we can balance that as best we can, given the circumstances. So, um, I would say at this point, those are still on the table as options.
I assume that this is contingent. I'm sorry, go ahead, Vicki.
My other question just has to do with how things are going or what your, what your plans or thoughts are as far as like curriculum development is concerned. Um, I know we were talking about because the reading scores were not where we wanted them to be. And there was going to be some discussion that you were going to re, relook at with your teachers, um, where we need to fill in the gaps for that. And then of course, I know we were in the middle of probably adapting or doing something different, uh, with our math. Uh, are we putting all of that on hold right now? Or are you still trying to do some of those types of things without over, overloading your teachers, which are already overloaded?
Yeah, we, so we planned, we talked back in, uh, with the, the teacher teams that are on those, uh, curriculum teams, both, uh, ELA and also specifically math, uh, looking at what we could do going forward. Uh, we did change our timeline for math and I think I did talk about this back in the, the spring, but we still would like, that was before we went full remote in the beginning of the fall. Um, I would still like to move forward with math, uh, but again, that's, that is somewhat dependent upon what happens within the, the, the next quarter with our students. If we can get to some stability with our programming, with our students and not have to constantly going back and forth, I think we would be able to ask of our teachers to continue some of that work. Definitely want to look at, at math for sure. Uh, we have some, uh, small pilots still going on, but we would like to be able to pull people in, take a look at those resources and hopefully be able, be able to make some recommendations for improvement with math, uh, with reading. So again, uh, given the circumstances that we have with this remote learning, it's given us an opportunity to pause, take a look at what we're doing uh, and look at again, additional resources that we may need, especially given the circumstances with two things. One, remote learning. And secondly, now that we are in this one-to-one, is there better resources that we can utilize because of the technology that we have in place? Absolutely. So I really would like to go back to that and, uh, get our teams together and take a look now that we have implemented. And now that we are in this different scenario, how, what's, what's worked in this different scenario? Cause we know pretty much going forward that now that this remote learning has been enacted, we can pretty well know that throughout this year, next year going forward, in the event that things like this happen again, and I'm not saying a pandemic, but in the event that we have, um, different issues that require us to go to remote, like we talked about e-learning with, with weather events. Um, we want to make sure that we again have resources that are not only going to provide good, uh, good resources for teachers for instruction in a classroom setting, but can we leverage the technology to help us with that as well? And are they adaptive? Can we use them in different environments? Um, so yes, I think we absolutely need to take a look at those resources uh, that we have currently in place and then, uh, potential for improvements there as well.
Thank you.
Allison, were you trying to ask your question earlier? Was that Mrs. Conquest?
It was me. Um, one question real quick for you. Uh, you mentioned, um, timeframes there and perhaps if we went back to all remote. Um, this is all contingent on what the survey is going to bring, correct? And also I don't hear us ever talking about when we go all full back to school. I know we're all talking about, um, you know, I want to talk positives too. So, uh, you know, I'm looking for these plans of when we're all back all in. Um, so I, I'm hoping that we have all of those. And when we do go back to that, what I'm looking for is a contingency plan of once in a while, are we going to revisit these emergency plans to ensure that we all still know what we're doing? Um, and, and that's one of my biggest concerns is we forget about these emergencies until we need to utilize them again. And maybe we're not so brushed up on our skill set by then. Um, so that's what I was just looking to ensure that we have kind of the fire drill, if you will, um, contingency plans.
Yeah, we certainly, and a lot of what we're looking for is those, the infrastructure. So as Aaron mentioned with technology, looking at the devices and that part of infrastructure, we've also looked at our, our, um, our human capital, our teachers, you know, what, what are we able to do to help them? And so this summer, we spent a lot of time, uh, creating professional development opportunities for teachers. And I can share with, uh, the board. Uh, I think we have some details that, uh, Ms. Chan Holter has as far as the number of teachers and the hours that they put in this summer doing a couple of things. One, uh, revising curriculum based on the needs that we had coming into this fall. Uh, secondly, professional development for the idea of instruction in a remote setting or a hybrid setting. Now, the other thing that we can look at is now that we are in this one-to-one scenario is how do we continue to leverage that technology to better our, better the effectiveness of what we're doing, but also again, as you mentioned, uh, making sure that in the event that we do some of this switching in and out, whether it just even be for that e-learning in which we have snow days that are, uh, piling up, be, being able to make that switch and still deliver very effective, uh, instruction. And I would say that our teachers have been learning and trying and doing a fantastic job implementing. But one of the things that we did is not only provide the professional development for those who are able to take advantage of it. We also identified, uh, train the trainer models. So we have teachers who have specialized in those professional development, uh, learned it and now are able to then share with their teams. So we have a number of teachers in each building that have now be, become identified as kind of an expert in the area of remote instruction that we're starting to leverage. And we need to continue building that capacity within our staff. And again, practicing it. So in the event that we are back to that full in-person, which would be fantastic, you're right. There, we have to be prepared for this remote opportunities to, to still lend themselves in the event of another pandemic, another, uh, weather related. I mean, there's been times in which flooding has occurred and we've had to be out of school for a number of days, um, things like that. I think all help us. And I think we can look at this as opportunities as well, that now we could be prepared for an opportunity to continue our learning in those situations. But then also in normal instruction and a normal given school year, can we extend our learning in different opportunities, different ways that might touch on those students who learn, um, you know, these different experiences might benefit them in learning that way or that method or that, that mode. So definitely want to keep that going. But again, that's human capital. And so we're looking at making sure that we have opportunities and helping our teachers along that pathway. But again, as, uh, um, uh, as we're looking at it, it's not like, um, giving them too much that they can't handle right now. So again, making sure that it is a prolonged sustained uh, support system that they have so that when, when they have the ability to, they can, uh, take advantage of that opportunity and then not just the necessity of having to learn it right when we need it. And unfortunately this, this fall, while we had those opportunities for professional development, we did not have great opportunities to slowly start to build up our understanding. We, you know, with going full remote from day one, it, it was jumping into the deep end of the pool. Um, as much as we prepare in advance, the reality is when you have students, now things change and to be able to adjust. And that's a very quick learning curve, uh, for our staff. And I think they did do a great job, uh, but it was tough. It definitely was tough for them.
Well, if I may, one of, um, the suggestions that I would give is our parents are also our human capital.
Yes.
And they feel as if they're building an airplane while flying it. Um, and if we could associate some of that e-learning responsibility into homework so that these parents become accustomed to utilizing some of these systems as part of their homework going forward so that they become a second nature to them. So this is something that they're, that they're used to doing throughout the curriculum going forward. So if we do fall into these interruptions in an educational system, this is, this is just normal practice for them to utilize some of these links, some of these, uh, e-learning responses that they need. If we can build that in as normal, um, part of the educational system, I think it will help everyone.
A hundred percent agree with you. And again, I think that's why we have to be able to go back and look at our resources that we're, that we're using within our curriculum and see if they're, they're adaptable to this. And if they're not, what could we be using instead? Because I think you're absolutely right. If this becomes part of the norm, if they're using this and it becomes effective for instruction, then it's not that big a change if we go into an environment of remote again, even if it's for a, a short period of time or a longer period of time. It's become part of the instruction, part of the curriculum. It's become part of the, the norm in which our students, our parents, our teachers are all familiar with.
I appreciate the lessons learned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had, um, kind of a two-part question for you. Um, one, what kind of feedback systems are in place for teachers as they kind of navigate? Like you said, they're jumping into the deep end. So what they've found that's worked for them? Um, utilize, you know, communicate back to other teachers. And on the other side of that, what opportunities are out there where we're maybe supporting kind of the, um, mental and social emotional health of our teachers? Um, they're giving so much of themselves right now to their students. Um, so what, you know, processes we have in place where we're supporting them um, as they're giving of themselves to our, our students?
Yeah. So as far as the feedback piece goes, uh, as teachers are working together, I know our buildings have put together our teams of teachers. And there are opportunities like our school improvement, uh, day that we had, which of course for the students was not a shortened day, but for our teachers, there was time built into it at the end to be able to start meeting and having those conversations. We've worked really hard in putting in a PLC model within our district and then our buildings have been implementing that in their, in the buildings, which essentially create teacher teams that start to discuss, um, curriculum instruction, but also results based on assessment and have those conversations. So I would say right now at the level that we're at, it is local. So our teams of teachers at grade level teams or, um, teachers at, in departments at the, at the junior high are having conversations about what they're doing. And those conversations occur a lot of times, it's the remote kind of conversation right now because of the nature of our, uh, teaching assignments. So they're having that type of conversation and improving their instruction. And I would say to an extent, it's actually, um, I would say encouraged more of that sharing, more of that conversation by necessity. Um, but again, I think it's been a positive as far as the communication happens. The idea now is how can we make that systemic? How can we keep these conversations going and broaden it beyond just the building? So can our third grade teams at Jones be, be communicating in a systemic fashion with our third grade teams at Oxable and MES and Walnut Trails? And those are the things that, um, I, we're considering, but I just, we don't know exactly what that looks like other than our teachers developing time to do that and trying to implement that. Now, in a, in an ideal situation, we would, when we have our teacher institutes and our school improvement, build that into those times. But I'll be honest with you, right now, a lot of that time is, is putting out the immediate fire, which is what am I doing next week with my students? How can we work together to develop what that looks like? And so really a lot of their time is the immediate, but the long-term goal is then what have we learned? And how do we, how do we learn that and, uh, extend that to our, our counterparts across the district? And I would say things like MIS and the junior high, uh, have a little bit of an easier time with that. Certainly not easy, but easier because they are all within one building. And they have more of that, uh, informal opportunities to have that back and forth conversation, but really it's what can we do to, to systemically do that? And I, it's a great, great point. Uh, we're just not, we're just not there at that point because we're putting out the immediate fires right now. There was another part to your question. Emily, could you help me out?
Yes, just how we're supporting our teachers' social emotional health, um, during this time where they're working, um, with unknowns and I, I'm sure a lot of extra hours.
Yeah. So what we, and again, there's no great answers for this. I think we're all trying to do what we can, but it's a learning curve. And I would say that our, our building leaders, uh, have been doing, uh, as best as they can as well. Um, one of the things I, we certainly tried to do in the summer was teachers, uh, recognizing the extra effort that they're putting into offering these opportunities. The trainers that were going to become, uh, trainers at the building, trying to compensate for their time that they're putting in. So a lot of that trying to do in the summer, but then the reality is, okay, the fall happened and now we're all in this unique situation. So a lot of that trying to do in the summer, but then the reality is, okay, the fall happened and now we're all in this unique situation. And I understand your point. I would say at this point, I, I don't know that we have a really great answer for that, other than we recognize what they're going through. We recognize the additional effort that they're putting into it because it's crazy right now with the workload that they have to, to, to try to figure out. And again, the description of building the plane while flying it with our parents absolutely applies to our teachers as well and our building administration. This is all so novel and new that we are really learning a lot as we're doing it and making constant adjustments. I would say the first thing that we're doing is obviously that recognition and knowing that our teachers are doing that. And I think that goes a long way. But as far as creating like a, a great support or opportunities for the mental health, I don't know that we have something specifically for that. Dr. Mann, would you have anything to add? Like where that might fall into?
I thought.
Go ahead.
I thought I asked this question last month and Mrs. Massey was investigating that part as part of the HR team that she was leading? If that's not correct?
Yeah, they, they, they did put together a, like a, lack of a better term, a packet of like a materials that are, are online that are available for staff as they deal with the stresses of the COVID-19 response and, and the adjustments they've had to make in their teaching environment as well. So yes, that was compiled.
It's, it's almost like this could have been, could be something to convert, have a conversation through like an employee assistant plan, things like that that are larger decision-making, obviously that's larger in, in scope. But I could see things like that coming up in conversation. But having something currently in place, I really think right at this point, our building administration specifically because they are working and have those relationships are trying to do their best. I think you're right, the HR side that Ms. Massey put together resources which are helpful. But then I, I think a lot of it's, it's, it's the relationship that we have with our teachers and, and reaching out and seeing what we can do and hearing from them.
I think, yeah, I think it's really important even just to be acknowledged from the district administration down, you know, yeah, how hard you're working. We know that this is, is challenging. I, I have encouraged parents, sometimes parents will give me a message like, oh, this teacher's doing this or that. And I really encourage them to email teachers. I just hope, you know, again, with the mental and social emotional health of our students and parents, very important, but our teachers can't support the kids if they're struggling on their own. So I just really hope that they have an avenue to reach out to, and I'm sure the building administration does wonderfully at that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I can, I can say, and I, I echo what, what was said right there, like, you know, many times a week I will get out into one of the buildings. And it's not the same pop-ins that you used to be able to do because most of the doors have a sign saying, shh, I'm zooming right now. So you really can't pop in, but when you happen to see somebody that, that, you know, isn't in a session, it just, I, I've really enjoyed the one-on-one conversations and I empathize with the stresses that they're going through. I was, I've spoken with a couple of our preschool teachers down here in Menoka Primary Center and remote preschool is just something that no one ever studied how to, how to implement. So these folks are doing an amazing job. The kids are logging in every day and they are engaging with these students in a new and exciting way, but it's, it's stressful for them. And it's, it's making them convert, you know, years of teaching one way in, into somehow making it all a digital format. So yes, we, we completely understand how hard everybody in the district is working to, to make this, to make this happen for our students.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions for Dr. Rulick? Okay, I, again, I spoke a, a great deal a little bit earlier, but I would just say that, you know, to, to everyone in our community and, and all of our staff, as we just tried to summarize, we, we know this is hard. We knew this was going to be hard when we developed a plan to bring kids back in August. And then when we, when we, when we made the decision that the remote instruction was going to be right for us for the first quarter, we knew that implementation was going to be hard. And so the, the, the schools are here to support you. The, the, the teachers are here. We have additional supports that are available for families that continue to struggle with how to make this work. And I think we all, we all share in a common goal, as Mrs. Thompson said, of, of trying to get back to a, a, a full traditional school model at some point. We, we don't know when that's going to be. And, and so we are currently tweaking plans that will allow us to get closer to it, but they have to have the flexibility knowing that there could be a chance where a couple of isolated cases cause us to go back to full remote for a, a small period of time. But everything that we're doing is, is all aimed at trying to get kids back into the classrooms that they've grown up with and getting teachers back in front of groups and kids to, to make those, those, those in-person connections that, you know, we, we've all treasured so much. So to, to everyone in the community, thank you for partnering with us and continuing to, to have patience as we, as we do our best for the students of the community. And we will, we will have more information coming up very soon, once we get a, a little bit further with our staff on, on what the next phase of returning to learn can look like here in Menoka. But with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from, or the next agenda item is any, any different topics that the board may want us to, to bring information on.
The only question.
Go ahead.
Only question I had that I don't think we heard back. Now there were a few weeks in, if you have, not for tonight, because I did not email you this ahead of time, but how many students were, we are reaching or we are missing? We got that in the spring. So if you, if you have any idea of that, or I, I'd love to hear that in the future.
Yeah, I have like anecdotal and verbal responses from the building administrators that I've talked to. In general, we have a very small number of students that are doing nothing. So I mean, there, there's a couple of isolated instances where the students that, you know, are, are not logging in on a daily basis, not submitting assignments. We've had some instances where parents didn't realize that assignments needed to be turned in this fall. So we've had some, some parent education to, to deal with there as well. Honestly, when, when students aren't logging into remote learning, it does, it does start up the same truancy type response that would have happened in traditional school had students not, you know, not attended and had unexcused absences. So we do have support from the regional office in those extreme cases. We haven't had to employ that, that, any of that yet. But the schools are definitely doing wellness checks on, on students that are, are showing that, you know, a lack of activity and, and trying to find out, is it a, is it an isolated moment or, or is it the sign of, of more, more severe issues that, that we need to help support with. But in, in most of the schools, a very small number of really non-attendees or, or, you know, apathy, if, for lack of a better term.
Thank you.
Any other board topics? Well, Mr. Satorius, we have, we do not have anything for executive session. So if there's no other questions for this evening, I would recommend that you adjourn the meeting.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 I think we got all seven there. Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Well, good night, everybody. We'll be in touch very soon and thank you for your time and your efforts as always. Good night all.
Good night.
Good night.